Good evening, Council. Let me look to see if we have everybody here. It is 6:30 PM, and this is the City Council's special meeting of Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Lita, will you do the roll call?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. The city is now using Zoom webinar to host its public meetings. To join the Zoom webinar on the web, https://zoom.us/i/97743476957. By telephone, dial 253-215-8782, and enter the following webinar ID when prompted: To view live at the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21. You can view it at the City YouTube or Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, the meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. The city website again is www.samamish.us/tv21. Our YouTube or Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Stewart, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. Everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. First thing we have is approval of the agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
移到
Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
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 Animes? Excellent. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to thecityclerk@samamish.us and the citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal public comment, please join the Zoom meeting if you would like to give verbal public comment. Information on how to join is listed under "Meeting Accessibility" at the top of this agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal comment may be provided per person live during the meeting.
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. For attendees who are joining by phone, please raise your hand by pressing *9. I see we have four people that have raised their hand for public comment. I will unmute the callers in the order they have raised their hands. When is your turn to speak? You will be converted to a panelist, be unmuted, and can turn on your webcam. Please note that during this conversion, it will feel like you have been removed from the meeting. Please wait a few seconds, and you will return. You will have three minutes to provide public comment. Fifteen seconds before your three minutes is complete, I will provide a time warning. At three minutes, you will be muted and converted back to an attendee. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. I will now unmute the first caller. First caller, Jan Bird.
Thank you. There we go. This is Jan Bird from Samamish, and I'd like to talk about the fact that the City Council has been holding an investigation of a public employee for at least eight months now, taking an inordinate amount of time in executive session at just about every City Council meeting. It's taken away anywhere from a half an hour to an hour and a half every meeting, just about. Council is authorized to hire an attorney and investigator out of taxpayer money, but the public has no idea of what's being investigated. Last Friday, we had a special meeting, and it was exclusively an executive session to once again evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee. I assume this to conclude the investigation, so now it's time to inform the public about what the charges are, what the conclusion is of this investigation, and in a format that's not heavily redacted. If we're serious enough to hire this much legal staff and take this much time away from the people's business, it certainly is something the public should know about. So let's do the right thing, inform the residents of Samamish about what's going on. Thank you for considering my comment.
I will now unmute the second caller. Can you unmute yourself?
There you go. Ramiro Valderrama, former deputy mayor of Samamish. As Jan Bird has just mentioned, the city's been expending an inordinate amount of time and funds on an employee investigation. This past Friday alone, the city held a five-hour executive session listed to evaluate complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. There have been other series of executive sessions, as was mentioned earlier, and the city's not been told what this is about. The council only hires and manages one person, the city manager, so we are led to assume that it is against Dave Rudat, who, by the way, is the sixth person in two years to occupy that seat, and by far the most expensive. As an extensive, public funds have been expended in the council, city managers' time, city staff, and legal resources into this investigation, the public has the full right to know what the complaints are. It is appropriate, and I insist that I and the public receive the full, unredacted final report of this process from each investigating and legal representative in this matter. In a public meeting, the city stated they were hiring an attorney and private investigator to investigate the employee. It has also been alluded that additional attorneys may have been hired for the council minority position in public employee. Hopefully, you can confirm this now. This would make at least two to possibly four legal hires for this investigation. This being the case, costing the taxpayers millions. You have ten forums under city litigation cited, a city attorney, prosecuting attorney, legal advocate, four public defenders, and legal services paid for. As Malcho will remember during the talk of having an investigation, final reports have to be public, as was the EFOR cost study, as Odell may remember. Conduct the city's business in the public and provide myself and all of our citizens with the full final reports associated with this employee investigation and associated council process. Most of you stated when you were running that you were going to be running for transparency and trying to have accountability. The time is now to start showing that transparency and that accountability, and not continue to be seen as dysfunctional and doing things behind closed doors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now unmute caller number three. This is a phone caller. Phone in.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. I've been in Samamish for over 20 years and been advocating for stormwater over six. I did send in some public comment tonight, written, because you guys don't let it show anything anymore, and it has excerpts from basin plans that the city has done before and things that I learned, so I hope that you will take the time to review that. The reason I'm speaking on stormwater is there's an informational presentation and report tonight scheduled for E8 and E9, which are related to stormwater. I also do see that there is a notice out for an RFP for consultants that the city of Samamish can adopt, a 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual instead of the current 2016 King County Stormwater Design Manual by the end of June 22. It's not clear to me from reading that if that's the city's timeline or if that's the NPDES requirement, but I understand it in moving forward with the latest King County code. So I would guess then that stormwater code amendments appear to already be part of the work plan, starting in December 2021, going throughout 2022. It would be nice if somewhere on the website, or in the city code, or some process, the city of Samamish would actually list in a place that people could regularly find them, the adopted basin plans, including the Inglewood 2005 and 2011, the Thompson 2011, and the most recently adopted plan, Zaccouche for 2018. I find those under the Zaccouche Basin Plan most regularly when I'm looking for them online. So I made a PowerPoint showing that, but I just wanted to say that basin plans are required to do them for NPDES now, and I believe, I don't know the cost of the Thompson one, but I think it was about $400,000. I know that the Inglewood one was actually over $400,000, and the Zaccouche one was over $200,000. So that's a million dollars worth of reports that the city's done, so I think it's important that we look at them and use their information. Just for examples, from the Thompson one, I did some excerpts to show that from 2000 to 2009, it looked like rainfall had been increasing, and that it looked like the wetland water levels or elevations had increased. An important thing to note is that the Inglewood has a lot of outwashed soils that are very infiltrative, about 7,000 acre feet, but you want to make sure that they don't overrun and clog. So it's really important that the city deal with drainage complaints and where there's flooding occurring, because in the 2005 report, it said, hey, when this starts to happen, you need to do things to address the flood flooding. There are also a lot of old and older septic systems in many areas, including the Inglewood Basin, which does not include the Inglewood plat, it's just the English Sub Basin, which may increase the fecal form, which I understand is going up in our streams and lakes. It will also reduce the amount of infiltration that soils can hold.
Fifteen seconds.
The stormwater retrofit consultant said we have good, strong codes, and what is really causing the problems is all the family houses that were built without flow control in the past, so I hope they'll work on that for drainage complaints in flooding areas and fix the problems and issues.
Thank you. Thank you for calling.
Now unmute the final caller.
Good evening, City Councilors. Paul Stickney, Samamish. Happy first meeting after the election, and therefore, I'm going to talk a little bit about direction. At last week's council meeting on the 1st of November, submitted a thing about election versus direction and the relative magnitude about how much larger an issue the direction of a community is compared to a single election cycle. In light of that, I rewrote something I turned in several months ago that only had a few words at that time. It was the "we, ourselves, and us." Sent it to all of you today, and on that, I had three little question marks and the term "NA." It's now time to expand on those. The question is, which growth direction is best now and for long-term in Samamish? Is it minimal growth as compared to King County, which our current comprehensive and last comprehensive plan is? Is it what is, you know, proposed, the number of units, road projects, not a lot of growth, which is less than our comp plan in the Bluma EIS? Or is it to remedy about 40 years of misdevelopment in Samamish by alleviating imbalance with optimal growth, where you add what you don't have enough of for your own residents over cycles of life and take away types that you have oversupplies of? Well, we haven't been able to achieve this in 20 years, because this is a big issue. It's a big order of magnitude. So the "NA" means that coming up with a growth direction we can all get behind has not been attainable, accessible, achievable, approachable, agreeable, affable, amenable, or abicable. You want to summarize it up? We haven't been able to answer which way we can get together and unify our community yet. Now's the time to get to that. So how to do it is get the CHU, which is information on what internal housing needs and wants are over lifetime. Get single-family build-out. What's the true capacity of land and zoning in the city today? And then contrast 40 consequence topics, or more fairly, with what happens if we go with current comp plan, Bluma EIS.
Fifteen seconds.
The trade-offs and outcomes are significantly different in holistic and specific ways. That's my comment. Have a fun meeting.
Thank you to all the callers for calling in. Next thing up is the consent calendar. I'm looking for a motion for approval.
移到
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent calendar, say aye.
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 The consent calendar is approved. Next, we have unfinished business, and the first thing up is the continued deliberation of ordinance, amending Chapter 21A.105, SMC, School Impact Fee Code amendments, local impact percentage, providing for severity and establishing an effective date. And this is David Pyle.
Good evening, Mayor. With us tonight, we have Lindsay Osbell from Community Development. She'll be doing a brief presentation for the council and then turning it over to you, Mayor, to continue in deliberation. Lindsay?
Thank you, David. Give me just a moment to share my screen, Council. There we go. Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor Lindsay Osbell with Community Development Services. We're here this evening to continue council deliberations and leading towards a potential decision on school impact fees, which is a carryover from the last regular council meeting where we held a public hearing. This evening, we have invited the school districts' representation as requested. I believe we'll have at least one member from the school districts joining us this evening. City Council, as I said, will continue deliberations on changes to school impact fees specifically, should the developer contribution amount be updated to 75% from the current 50%. Also, cleaning up some Scrubner errors in reference to interim comprehensive plan and incorrect code citations. And also a reminder that City Council did hold the public hearing on November 1st. That public hearing was closed, and there was no public comment given that evening. We did receive public comments in a written format, in the form of a joint letter from school districts, a letter from the Master Builders Association of King and St. Homish Counties, and from three residents leading up to the public hearing. We heard verbal testimony from Barbara Posthumus representing the school districts and from two residents at previous meetings, and there were no comments received during the SEPA comment period, or appeal period. Planning Commission did recommend approval as presented by staff with a vote of 4 to 2, and as described in the Agenda Bill and attached to the ordinance for your consideration this evening. This time, that concludes staff's presentation. Please let us know if you have any questions. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen, but if you need me to pull up something, please don't hesitate to ask me to do so.
And Lindsay, I do believe that Barbara Posthumus from the Lake Washington School District is in attendance and has been promoted to panelist and has opportunity to be asked questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, David.
Okay, so I'm going to go, I know we have some strong opinions on this from all over the place, so I'm going to go. Does anybody want to start this discussion off?
Got my hand up, Karen.
Oh, I didn't see your hand. Oh, your hand is very manila. Okay. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, the changes as recommended by the Planning Commission and Scrubner errors.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, so we're going to open up for discussion.
I'd like to speak to my motion, please.
Okay.
Thank you. So we had a long deliberation on this last week. I know we didn't have all the council members present, so I'd be interested to hear from Councilmembers Gamblin and Trine specifically, since they were not present. I did read over the letter that was given to us earlier this afternoon, that was signed by folks from all three districts. I do want to at least point out a few things, at least from my read on things. First of all, the reference to "one size fits all" in the fee, we're not proposing to change the impact fee. The impact fee, I recognize, as calculated by each district, is very specific. It has a specific formula. I understand it. I attended a January 2019 meeting. Councilmember Stewart was also present. We had representatives from all three districts, and Denise Stifarm, who is the attorney for all of the districts that represent Samamish, was also present and presented us with information at that meeting to kind of help council better understand how the impact fee calculation goes. And so I wanted to focus on the final calculated fee from the districts. It is that fee that then is subsequently discounted, and I will point to the Lake Washington School District's 2021 Capital Facilities Plan and every previous capital facilities plan that this council and each and every council across their school boundaries adopts, says it's based on King County Code 21A.43. That's not based on our code. It's not based on Kirkland's code. It's not based on Redmond's code. It is based on King County Code. When we incorporated as a jurisdiction, we basically inherited all of King County's code, and we have systematically gone back and revisited that code so that it matches with what we want to do. I would argue that the districts have taken their calculated school impact fee, which for 2021, for multifamily residential, just as an example, is $7,020. Then they divide it in half, because that's what King County Code says, and that's what our current code says. So what we've essentially done is said the impact is $7,020, but we're only going to ask the development community to pay half of the calculated impact. I understand the terms proportional share. I understand that we can go further than 50%, and that's what this ask is, and that's what these code changes essentially do, is they move that needle from 50%, which is what the development community is being asked to pay with each multifamily or single-family residential unit that's constructed. And we're moving that so that they are then responsible for 75% of that, so that we, the proportional share, and I understand state law, says we cannot have the full impact borne by new development, that there has to be a reasonable balance between the existing taxpayer base and the new development. And frankly, the new development that comes in, when they calculate out that $7,000 fee, things have already been subtracted from that. They're taking away the state assistance credit. They're taking away the taxes that they pay towards the bonds that are currently in place. So they've reduced it already to come up with that $7,000, because the impact fee is larger than that. It's just that's the subtracted value. To divide it in half puts that burden back on our taxpayers and every taxpayer that is in a district. I know we have representatives from the Lake Washington School District here, and, you know, if they want to speak about this. I don't understand, frankly, why the school districts would not want the development community to come forward and pay a greater percentage, and why they would want their taxpaying base, which frankly makes it harder for them to pass these bonds. In 2018, the Lake Washington School District had a bond fail, and it would have put a choice high school inside Samamish, but it failed. Their taxpayers said no, and I understand, bonds require 60%, and it's a higher threshold than maybe the school districts would like, but frankly, that is state law, and that is not our choice to change. But I think they have a better argument for passing bonds in the future if they say we're trying to move the needle so that the impact is bearing more of the cost of building new schools. I understand the bonds will still be tens, maybe hundreds of millions of dollars in asks, but we are growing at a very rapid rate, and not just us in Samamish everywhere, and I think this is the right move, to move that needle. And frankly, the developers probably aren't going to pay this fee. They are going to pass it on to the home buyer, but if you look at multifamily units in the city of Samamish, they're hovering around $8, $9, $1 million. So an additional $3,500, which is what it is, and actually, it's not even $3,500, that would be the full 100% of the impact fee as calculated, is not going to change a whole lot. So I would ask for the support of the City Council on this motion, that we move forward and ask the development community to either pay it or pass it on to the point of impact. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart, and then I'm going to go to the school districts so they have a chance to respond.
You can go ahead and go to the school district first, Mayor. I would love to hear from them.
Okay, so Barbara or Denise, did either one or the other want to respond to the deputy mayors?
Yeah, I'll just say, I was invited to this meeting, and I'm happy to answer specific questions. I think we, I have shared, you have our letters that kind of state the school district concerns, and I provided testimony at the last meeting, so I could reread my testimony, but I don't think that's what you're interested in having me do, but I'm here to, again, answer if there's specific questions that you have.
I can tee those up then, Madam Mayor, if that helps.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so first, I want to thank you guys for coming again, and I want to thank you for providing another letter. I know David reached out and invited you, but didn't include my question, so I hope that when I responded with the questions, it gave you enough time to prepare. I just wanted to, so, Juan, I wanted to make the statement that, look, I am a product of public education. I went through public education. I went to a public college. I am a 1,000% supporter of public education, and I love the idea of raising more money for public education in ways that make sense. But whenever I hear the school districts and the school board saying, please don't do this, you know, you guys run your thing and we run ours, so I want to make sure we understand this and that we're respectful of your wishes. So I want to make sure we understand this and that we're respectful of of your wishes because you are ultimately responsible for getting the funding you need to serve, you know, the students in your community. So I'm gonna I'm gonna kind of make some statements and then ask questions just based on what I saw in your letter. So one of the questions I asked was, you know, kind of what is the downside of us doing this, right? Because on the surface, it seems like a great idea, like let's raise more money for the schools. But one of the things that jumped out at me was that you said that there is legal authority that permits varying fees amongst jurisdictions within the same school district as long as the assessed fee is uniform throughout the assessing jurisdiction and supported by an adopted capital facilities plan. And then it goes on to say that your elected boards adopt a capital facilities plan with an impact fee intended to be consistent across the district. So my question on that is, it sounds like we create some sort of additional accounting or other challenges by us having a different fee. So for example, we'll just take Lake Washington, right? And again, this applies to three school districts since Sammamish is in three. If we just look at Lake Washington, what what I hear, what I think this says is if Sammamish charges a different rate than Redmond does within the Lake Washington School District, that your capital facilities plans don't actually accommodate varying fees. Is that is that correct?
I think what we're trying to say is the board, as our board has adopted, you know, developed the capital facility plan and adopted that fee, the board adopted that fee with the intention of that is the Lake Washington School District impact fee rate. So we understand that this, again, I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak to the legal aspect of that, but we understand the the concept of the city saying they have legal authority to do a different rate. But when our board adopts the rate, it was the intent of, you know, a consistent rate across the district.
Right, and and I guess what I'm trying to understand in kind of layman's terms is like, well, what what's wrong with us raising the rate, right? Because like, again, on the surface, it seems like a great idea. It raises more money, but it sounds like there's some sort of a challenge. And I'm trying to remember back to that meeting back in, did you say it was 2019, Kristi, when we met, that it sounded like there was some challenge that if we charge a different rate than, and I'm just going to use Redmond. Let's just say, you know, between Sammamish and Redmond, both in the Lake Washington School District, that somehow that means that the way the fees get applied has to now somehow be different. But I I don't want to make assess assumptions. I want to understand, like, what is the downside? You've asked us not to do this. So what is the downside of us raising the rate in just Sammamish?
And I think from an accounting standpoint, there isn't additional accounting work. You're going to collect the fees. You you transfer those revenues to the districts on a monthly basis, so it's not not an additional accounting work. And and we've expressed concerns with the proposal as opposed to outright, you know, disagreement. We've just shared some of our concerns with that, so.
And I saw Denise came out from you. Did you have something more that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I know. I think Barbara covered it well, and I think the the main point is the district plans its service area across the district. It doesn't plan city by city or area by area, and so the impact fees are based upon the district's service area. And that is where the board, when reviewing that district-specific planning, applies that discount that it thinks is appropriate.
So if we if we collect more, could it mean that we're collecting across the district a disproportionate amount to the developers? Is that why this potentially is bad? Like, again, I'm just trying to understand because I'm still not totally clear. I understand that you're saying, hey, if this gets challenged, you know, in the past, you guys have taken the legal liability that says if anything gets challenged, you'll cover the legal fees. You're saying if we go and do this, kind of, you know, we're on our own, and if there are challenges, then we have to bear those legal fees. But I I don't understand, you know, aside from that, which which could be significant for Sammamish, but you know, that's a risk we could decide to take. But what would be the other downside of us doing this? Because it it sounds like it will collect a little bit more money. I mean, not a lot. If if our, you know, our our growth targets that this council approved are only 700 homes over the next 30 years. So it's it's not a ginormous number of housing units over a period of time, but it will add up to a few million dollars. So why wouldn't we want to collect a few million more dollars?
So I'm I'm going to, Councilmember Stewart, be a little bit high level, simply because some of this would be privileged conversations that I would have with my clients. And so the, but I will reiterate that the districts have from the outset made the request that should this change be made, that that interlocal agreement also be amended for that purpose.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. And then just so the public, because the public probably hasn't had, doesn't have access to your letter. The other part of your level letter, excuse me, letter basically states that, you know, obviously, we can, we will raise a little bit more money, but that overall impact fees are a very small portion of of the amount of money needed. So some of the numbers, some of the numbers are that in Issaquah, it's 2.71% of the district's total capital budget over the last 10 years. In Sammamish, the impact fees were approximately 5.4% of the 47 million for a new school. And that for the Lake Washington School District, impact fees were only about 4.4% of the funding between 2016 and 2019. And so you would still need, as as Deputy Mayor pointed out, pretty ginormous bond and levies. It may it may make them smaller by a very tiny margin, probably not enough for us to to have a material noticeability. But it would it would still be more money. Is that an accurate assessment then? Just so, again, the public has all of that. So, okay, so it sounds it sounds to me, and I'm not I'm not putting any words in Denise's mouth or Barbara's mouth, but it sounds to me like there are potential legal issues and that we would be putting the city of Sammamish in the crosshairs of those legal issues if we move forward. And we really, I think the decision point then for the council is, is the small marginal amount of additional money raised really going to be worth, you know, potential legal issues? And I think that's really the decision. I think Deputy Mayor also said it really well is, you know, if people think we're doing this and it's going to affect the developers, it's really not. It's going to be passed on to people who are going to have to pay this money when they buy homes. And we've all had to buy homes, and we're all going to potentially probably have to buy other homes at least one more time in our lives. And all of those fees just add to the the skyrocketing costs of housing in the area. So I I think that's really what the decision comes down to is, is the small amount of revenue that we will raise over the next 30 years or however much time worth taking on additional legal risk and liability? So thank you very much, and again, appreciate you guys coming out on, well, joining us, not coming out on a rainy Tuesday night.
Okay, well, I think I may be next. Okay, so Barbara, always good to see you. I had just a couple of questions. The letter that was sent today, one of the questions or one of the things that was in here was that one of the things that was changed in Carnation and Duval was actually an adjustment factor. And I happen to agree with the deputy mayor that one of that that we do need to, and we should be, having the developers pay more. But to me, it is something that the, the thing I'm having a problem with this evening is the fact that we didn't sit down with the school district prior and work with you guys on what that was. I would rather have taken the avenue that was done, that Carnation did previously, and have everybody sit around a table because I feel like we're we're playing in somebody else's sandbox, and we're not being very nice about it. So what was the, that being said, what was the factor, the adjustment factor that was used in Carnation that was changed? Can either of you answer that for me?
Yeah, I can speak to that. The Riverview School District, which serves Duval and Carnation, is also my client, and I was actually involved in those discussions. What occurred is, at that time, the cities of Duval and Carnation, and it is true today, always looked to the school district and their capital facilities plan to propose what the adjustment or the discount to the impact fees were. Instead of changing their code, they reached out to the school districts as two cities, and they formed an ad hoc committee essentially with members of each city council and the school district and worked with the district to to determine where the district would be comfortable in terms of an adjustment other than 50%. They ultimately landed on what is a discount of 25% or charging 75% of the fee. So essentially what the ordinance is before you this evening. And with the Riverview School District, it is something they revisit every year when they're doing their capital facilities planning, and they make the decision based upon their own district planning, their own demographics, whether they are still comfortable with that from year to year, and they have ongoing conversations with both of their cities about that.
Okay, so when they use that, when they use that adjustment factor, do they use that 75% on single family and multifamily?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so that leads me to the second issue I'm having this evening is that I want to buy a new house. And I would be paying, if if this passes this evening, I would be paying the new 75% because it's, but to be honest, this is going to be paid by the the person buying the house. This is not going to be paid by the developer. So I would be paying the full amount. However, we're still, the person buying the house is basically, we are going to be still subsidizing the multifamily units because, in my opinion, the multifamily, the multifamily formula that is in the Lake Washington School District really needs to be looked at and addressed. And that is one of the things that I I really regret that we are not sitting down and talking about because to me, to have have that be on the shoulders of people that are buying a single-family home is very unfair. So I guess that's what I'm I'm struggling with. Because I do believe that the the equations that are here for the multifamily are outdated, especially because the multifamily units we are seeing in our city no longer have, you know, the two bedrooms, the one bedrooms. We're seeing a lot of three, four bedrooms, and they're producing more kids. And I know when I went to the meetings down there and we talked about that, at least the last superintendent of the district, she wanted to actually go out and and start looking at that in the different areas. I don't know if anything's been done more with that, but to me, that formula needs to be adjusted. So to make only, it seems very one-sided to not address both. But I'm, it's interesting that they they chose to do both together, so that answers that question for me. Okay, so I see hands up again. I'm going to go to Councilmember Odell because he has not had any questions yet, so Councilmember Odell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I agree with your, what you just said about the generation rate in the multifamily housing. I have personally witnessed bus stops for where they've had two buses unloading, two buses with the kids at one stop right across from Eastlake High School. There's a multifamily development in there that is full of kids. And also, when I look at the generation rates used by the three different school districts, I fail to understand why they are so disparate. They are not even close to each other. So who's right here? And frankly, this may be off topic compared to the the factors we're talking about for the the tax issue. However, the, to me, is part of part of the same larger issue that needs to be addressed. Having said that, I think the difference between 50% and 75% is significant. It does add up to several million dollars. And a few few million here and a few million there, and eventually you wind up a major amount of money. When Blackwell Elementary opened up in Sammamish, my wife was on the team, and it was within the year that they had portables there. The portables are still there. And frankly, if we had more money coming in the door, we might have kids not having to go outside in portables and weather like we've had lately, and teachers having to do the same thing. So I think whatever we can do to provide additional revenue to the school system is fine, besides just having it come out of the pockets of every every taxpayer. Girls should pay for girls more than it is now, and this is one of the areas it should. Having said that, I will get off my soapbox and yield to the next speaker.
Okay, I'm going to go to Chris, Councilmember Ross. You have not had any questions yet.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about the interlocal agreement. Say we made this change as a council, does that automatically update the interlocal agreement? Or is that subject to further negotiation? And therefore, is our legislative change merely a recommendation?
David?
I, that's one I don't know the answer to. So, you know, the the code and the interlocal are two separate items. So I I don't know that if the code is changed, I believe the question was if the code is changed, does that necessitate then, or does it automate the updating of the interlocal? And if that's the question, the two are not connected. One informs the other. So if the district is saying that they would then like to initiate an amendment to the interlocal, well, I believe they reserve the right to request amendment to the interlocal that they are party to in addition to the city.
I think that's correct. Can Barbara or Denise, can you confirm that that's correct?
I'll defer to your city attorney and city staff to give advice, but my perspective is that the interlocal is a separate document and would be subject to separate legislative action, separate and apart from this ordinance.
Lisa?
Excuse me, I agree with that. The fact remains that if the interlocal is not amended, the school district could always choose not to defend the challenge to the impact fee amount, and then the city would be left in a position with stepping in to defend that. And an amendment to the interlocal would really just formalize that relationship and that arrangement.
Okay. I thought I saw, oh, yes, Councilmember Trin.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Ross for bringing that up because that was my question. So just a follow up there for Lisa then. So I I don't know if I completely grasp the impact then to the city or the risk to the city. I mean, maybe it's not a risk. It just means we're going to have to do more work?
Right, if a developer challenges the fee, which is certainly theoretically possible, then if the city wants to protect that fee, the city would need to step in and defend it if the school.
I get that. I get that part, right, that we'd have to defend. No, I was on the interlocal agreement, which is where Councilmember Ross was, was that we would have to, and what I understand from what Denise was saying, we would have more work possible that if this were to pass, there would possibly be more work to be done to kind of shore up, I don't know if that's the right word, shore up that interlocal agreement. Is that what they're saying?
Well, I think I'll let this district speak for itself, but ideally, the interlocal would match what is actually happening on the ground, not something different.
And Councilmember Trin, I'll just follow up on that and say, yes, we would see it as a second action.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. As people were speaking.
Thanks. As people were speaking, I was just kind of jotting down a few thoughts here. And I want to be clear to those that are here from the district or anyone who's listening. I, you know, the point of this is to be a partner and an advocate. We're not trying to be adversary at all in this. My personal take on the way that we go about and the district goes about, and I know it's not the district specifically, but they have a committee that will run their bonds for them, is that this actually assists you in future bond measures, because we're kind of helping carry the weight a little bit more and less on the backs of the taxpayers. And I think that is a positive message that the districts can use moving forward. But back to some of the comments, I want to be clear, we're not changing the fee. The fee is calculated by the districts, and I understand the fee. I understand the math behind the fee. What we are changing is the discount. That is what I am proposing we change, not the fee. So when we look, I mentioned the multifamily, but I want to mention for everyone's ears, the single-family rate for the Lake Washington School District, as proposed in their 2021 Capital Facilities Plan, is $37,994. That is the calculated impact for putting one student in one seat. What we're doing is dividing it in half. So the actual impact fee that a developer pays is not $37,994. It's $18,997. So by moving it closer to the actual impact, we are removing a burden from taxpayers. And it doesn't matter where the money is spent, really, because I look at the district as its own entity, yes. And when you guys run a bond, or when you build a school, you're not using just Redmond's dollars to build the school if it's in Redmond. You're not using just Sammamish dollars if you're doing, you know, adding capacity at Carson, right? You're using the district's dollars. And so by Sammamish stepping up and saying, hey, we're going to ask for a little bit more from the development community that's closer to the calculated impact, we're helping the district as a whole, not just Sammamish. So it doesn't matter when they run a bond, everybody's paying, whether you're in Kirkland, Redmond, unincorporated King County, or in Sammamish, everybody's paying. So we're helping, at least through, from my lens, at least a little bit more if we move that needle a little bit. What I heard stated was that the board settles on the local share, which is what's stated in the Capital Facilities Plan. But it says at the very top of that page, estimated school impact fee calculation based on King County Code 21A.43. It's based on King County Code, which divides by two. And I would argue again, that the districts in calculating out the impact by using another municipality or agency's code is a step beyond what they need to take. What they need to take is to calculate the impact. And then each municipality or agency goes and says, okay, well, our code says divide by two. If we're King County, and we divide by two, and then the impact fee we collect is $18,997. But if we're Sammamish, and it's not divide by two anymore, and we're taking 75%, then our impact fee that we collect is just simply larger. So that's just a nuance. But it does say in the Capital Facilities Plan, it's based on King County Code. It is not based on Sammamish Code. It's not based on Kirkland Code or Redmond Code, King County. So the other thing that's been brought up, and I recognize there's a disparity in single-family rates versus multifamily rates, but I at least want to give a pat on the back to the districts. They are calculating out the student generation rate, or SGR. It is based on five years, the last five years worth of new development, and what is actually being turned out. The, I don't think that their fee or their calculation is off. It's just, yes, Sammamish is multifamily. We're seeing four and five bedrooms in our multifamily. But that might get averaged out by only one or two bedrooms in Redmond. And I think that's maybe why we're seeing the disparity in the multifamily generation rate between the Lake Washington School District and the Iskwa School District, which has much larger multifamily rates. I don't think it's because their formula is off. I think it's literally based on generation rates. And if you go and read their capital facilities plans, you can see exactly how many students are being turned out in these new developments in terms of elementary, middle, and high school students. They break it down. However, I do want to nuance the fact that when I read the Capital Facilities Plan for the Lake Washington School District, that their 2021 Capital Facilities Plan is not using the last five years, because they are using 2020 numbers. Again, it says there's a line in there because of COVID. So please note that it is actually an identical, I'm assuming, generation rate from last year. It is not updated. So any new development that's occurred, any new students that have been turned out in the last year are not being captured in that, in that rate, for what it's worth. Yeah, and I can just, and again, you're correct in that we are using the last five years, and that's part of the required process. And so, yeah, there is an errors in the calculations, but we are using the last five years of development, as we have done. And you're correct that we, because of COVID, because there was enrollment declines due to the pandemic, we use the same student generation rate. Because without that, they actually, it would have
Gone down.
Gone down. Yep. And that's a benefit for us, and frankly, all of our taxpayers. So I applaud your recognizing the value in doing so. So just a couple more thoughts on portables. I think you're always going to see portables, even at brand-new schools. And I'll tell you why. Because the school districts are acting very conservatively when they go out for these bonds, and they don't want to overbuild. Consider the pandemic. If the, if the Lake Washington School District had gone out and built that choice high school in Sammamish, and it was standing there, half-empty. That is not good for their bond rating, and it is not good for you as a taxpayer in the Lake Washington School District. So they act conservatively. And what you'll find when they run bonds, and they being Iskwa, Snoqualmie Valley, or Lake Washington, is oftentimes within those bond measures, there's new portables. And that is just them being conservative with taxpayer dollars. So we're never going to get rid of portables, unfortunately. I know students don't preference being in them, and I understand that, but they will probably always be something that the districts use because it helps them to be savvier with taxpayer dollars. And I want to liken some of the comments that I heard on while the impact is not a huge amount, and when this comes back out for a bond measure, when Lake Washington or Iskwa School District needs to build some more capital facilities. No, the difference from your pocketbook isn't going to make a whole lot of difference, but I will liken that to our conversations that we just had last week relative to us taking the 1%. It doesn't amount to a whole lot for people. It's, you know, 1% is about, I think, $30 on the average-sized home, but it all adds up. It all adds up. And that's why it's important that we take the opportunity that we've been given to shore this up a little bit more to the favor of our taxpaying base. And also, relative to Duval, Duval didn't change the percentage because it's not embedded in their code. They don't have a reference. They don't have the actual calculation in their code. So it's not a direct line comparison in what they did and what we're attempting to do. We have the formula in our code, in Title 21A. It is embedded in our code, and we have the ability to remove divide by two, and that's what this motion is. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great discussion. And again, I just want to emphasize that, you know, raising money for schools is important, but I think respecting the autonomy of the school districts and, again, being partners as opposed to kind of going off and doing something that they're asking us and recommending that we not do, doesn't feel like the right thing to do. I will add that I caution us to talk about anecdotal things. I know Councilmember Odell, maybe you've seen two buses pull up at some, you know, place across from Eastlake. Well, there are a lot of housing units in there. I will tell you that there are two, there were two buses for the elementary school where I live in two not-so-ginormous neighborhoods. So Greenbrier and Arbers at Pine Lake had two school buses for Smith Elementary School one year. So I think the student generation rates, as I have seen and witnessed from the school districts, are really quite accurate. So I don't think we need to be, again, questioning the school districts and their calculations. I think they do their jobs just fine. And I just, I, again, I also want to say that to say that the bonds are not going to tax or not going to be paid for by future residents is not true either, because we pay bonds over a long period of time. So knowing that these impact fees are going to be paid for by people buying a new house, those same people are going to also pay for the bonds. And as a matter of fact, the bonds will be paid for by new people moving into our community, whether they buy a new house or an old house. So the bonds are going to be paid for over, you know, a 20- or 30-year period of time. So new people will pay for the bonds, just like new people might pay for these impact fees. So again, for me, I think the decision is really twofold. It's, one, are we, the city of Sammamish, willing to take the legal risk that this is going to potentially impose? And, two, should we be working in opposition to our school districts, or should we sit down and have conversations with the school districts to figure out a better way to partner with them forward, like the Riverside School District did, where it's a partnership and it's a joint recommendation coming from the school districts and the city? So to me, those are, those are really the big decision points for me. I don't think we want other jurisdictions telling us what to do, and I don't think we should be telling the school districts, you know, kind of how to run things. So that's where I'm coming from. And I did a quick calculation, and I think it would be about, if this was all in Lake Washington, it would be less than $6 million over the next 30 years for the 700 units that are our growth target. So $6 million isn't nothing, but over 30 years, it's not a whole lot. So thanks.
Okay, and I think I get to be the next one. Well, Pam, you know, you and I just are not very often on the same page here. But in this particular case, we're half on the same page. I agree with the Deputy Mayor that this is a topic that we need to take care of. What I don't agree with is how we're going about this. I think that what we're missing is sitting down with the school board and having the discussion. For example, you know, we talk about impact fees of $18,000 on a single-family home. I'd like to know why we're at, you know, 2,700 for a multifamily. I'd like to know. You know, I would like to know, you know, where the discussions went from the last time we met with the superintendent of they were going to look at perhaps dividing it up at different cities and looking at, you know, doing it that way. I'd like to know where those discussions went. I just think that for us to be telling them what to do versus having a discussion with them is not the way to partner with the school district. And that's where I'm having an issue. I do think that adjusting one without, or taking care of one without the other is just wrong. I think that we need to take care of both. And to me, the second one is the fact that I believe that that multifamily needs to be looked at and have a discussion had. So that's where I'm coming from on that, and I think that it requires us to sit down with the school board. And so to rush that, I'm with the Deputy Mayor on the fact that something should be done, but I don't believe that we should be doing that without working with the school board to do it. Okay. Oh, I knew that was going to draw some hands. I love this. Okay, Councilmember Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. We had this discussion a year ago. And since then, there hasn't been a hue and cry over whether we move forward with this since. So we effectively kicked the can a year ago and said, let's continue to review it. We've had a year. We've run it through the Planning Commission. They made their recommendation. I didn't see a flurry of feedback on that decision. And now we're addressing it again. About telling the schools what to do, I do respect that perspective, but this is our tax base that we can manage through our ordinance. And our tax base, we can shape who pays. And the 75% puts more on the burden on new residents of Sammamish versus the existing tax base, which I think is a fair thing and something that we, as a city, have the fiduciary duty to be able to recognize that. It's not in someone else's sandbox in that regard. The impact fee, we're not tinkering with their calculations. I heard Barbara mention that they can do the accounting, so that's not a concern. So I think we can amicably move forward and make the appropriate adjustments and follow through with an interlocal agreement to make this something positive. And maybe the other cities in this jurisdiction may follow us. And so maybe we achieve a new standard 75% discount or 25% discount rate for all of us and get back to where we are with a more simple model of 50%, but go towards a 75%. So maybe we, us taking the leadership will help the other jurisdictions as well.
Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. As to the accounting complications, this is fundamentally a couple of lines on a spreadsheet, so I don't put much into the argument. I want to say I agree with everything Chris Ross has just said, that we, this is not the first time we've had this kind of discussion. And the fact that no action's been taken by people who could do something about it, and the fact that the Planning Commission has reviewed this in some depth, I am going to call the questions. Thank you.
Okay, we've had a call for the question. All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? Nobody? Okay. All those in favor, Kristi, can you, I think everybody knows what it was, but can you state your motion for the?
Yeah, the motion is as described in the agenda packet. It's amending Chapter 21A. 105 of the Sammamish Municipal Code for School Impact Fees as recommended by the Planning Commission along with scripturers errors.
Okay, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Roco?
Yep. I believe it's a 4-3, but I believe it passes.
4-3.
Mayor Karen Moran? Nay. Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho?
Aye.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Tom Odell?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Ross?
Aye.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Kent Trine?
Nay.
So the ayes have it with four, and nays three. It looks like we want to adjust multifamily. Unfortunate. Okay. I guess we'll move on. Thank you for the Lake Washington School District. My apologies to the board members.
Thank you.
Next item?
I'll go ahead and introduce it. The next item on the agenda is a development permit fee study that will be presented by the Department of Community Development. We'll walk you through our findings on the status of our fee structure and how we're doing with regard to recovering expenses in servicing development permit, development doing with regard to recovering expenses in servicing development permit, development permit review. We have with us tonight Courtney Ramos from Matrix Consulting, and Matrix has done a great job helping us sort through our past fee practices, how much time we spend on applications and with our staffing, and has made some recommendations that she'll be presenting to you tonight. I'll turn it over to Courtney. We also have Sarah Siri, management analyst with the Department of Community Development, who will be assisting Courtney in filling in any information as will I in the background. Thank you. Courtney? It appears that we cannot hear you at this point. I don't know if you're muted or if there's a... Just wanted to verify, we still cannot hear you. Hopefully you can hear me.
I can hear you, David. I can't hear him or her.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll see if that helps.
Courtney, I also recommend you to change, select the microphone. There's next to the mute button, and say, click save the same system, save a system, and then click it back again. It might work.
How about now?
We've got you.
You're on.
We can hear you.
Fantastic. Okay. Not sure what happened, but we'll go with it. Okay. So you guys can see my screen?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Fantastic. Sorry about that.
Can you go to presentation, Odell, please?
Yes. There we go. Had to first solve the microphone problem, then had to find the presentation. Otherwise, too many things go away on my screen and I lose everything. Well, thank you all very much. I'm pleased to be presenting the results of the fee and staffing analysis, providing an overview of the study of kind of where we're at and a little bit of where we'd like to go with the results of this analysis. So tonight, what we wanted to do was give you an overview of the project and approach that we took, a summary of the findings and results, and then to talk about the direction that is being requested from council based on the findings and the results from this analysis. So kind of a brief, how did we get here? We started this project in July. In August, we commenced the staffing analysis, and then through September, we did come to council and presented some initial study results, and it gave you an update of where we were at, what we were doing. In October, we worked with city staff to review and revise the information that we had, and finalizing those results. So we're now here in November, presenting you with the final results of the analysis. And ideally, in December, it will be brought back to council to adopt updated fees based on the information that has come about through this fee analysis. So a little bit about the approach that we took. We started by discussing service level assumptions, so really what goes into each particular fee. You know, some fees are simple, they're over the counter, doesn't take a whole lot of review. Other applications, other permits, take, you know, significant plan review or significant inspection. So really working with staff to understand what are the service level assumptions associated with all of the different development-related services that we're providing. We determine the roles and responsibilities of staff based on current and projected workload. So, you know, do we have the staff that we need to provide the services that we're providing? We looked at calculating the full cost of providing each service. And when we say full cost, we mean both the direct, so the salaries and benefits associated with the specific staff who are actually touching that particular permit or application, as well as indirect costs. So the managerial and administrative support associated with staff in building or planning, as well as city support, things like HR, finance, payroll, those kinds of services. So really looking at what is the full cost to the city to be, to provide these services. And then we reviewed and revised those results with management and department staff. So again, wanting to make sure that the numbers that we had that were provided by line-level staff, that management was in agreement with that, as well as that it made sense in looking at the types of services that were being provided, that those time estimates were generally in line with what we see in other jurisdictions.
Courtney, if I could interrupt for just a second. We had a request that we were able to switch to the presenter mode. You may not be aware, but the, on our end, we're getting all the slides in the slide deck. I don't know if that's possible. Just want to make sure that we have the right font size for people to be able to read.
Yeah. Let's see, if I start again, is it still showing you all the slides?
Yeah. It is, yeah. If you go back to that screen, and if you go down to the bottom and click on the projector setting, to the, a little bit to the left, the one that shows the projec, right there? Yeah. It should, oh, yeah, I don't know what's going on here.
Let me try, stop sharing really quick, because maybe when I clicked to share, I might have clicked on the wrong. Let's see. How about now?
There we go. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think it was just, it was showing too many different, I've got two screens up so I can see you guys and also see the presentation, so.
Happened to me several times, so I share, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, then I'll show you this lovely graphic again, really quick, so that we're in an appropriate font size. Nobody has to lean in real close to the presentation. So the project findings, what kind of came out of this study, were some key things. One is that the city really should modify its fee structures to support current services and service levels. So really kind of make it align with how we're providing services right now, as opposed to the structure that currently is there, which is not really reflective of how services are being provided, or the level of services that are being provided. Adopting an updated, fully burdened hourly rate specific to each development service area, rather than using a singular hourly rate for all development services, really kind of taking a look at and saying, what is the blended rate for building? What is the blended rate for planning? And again, if we do nothing else, from, if we adopt nothing else from this study, if we can at least update those fully burdened hourly rates, it'll allow staff to recover for those costs that we're billing on that, on an hourly basis. Implementing a technology surcharge that'll recover costs for permitting system. So what this will allow the city to do is start to recover for the costs associated, not just with the permitting system, but annual updates and other technology needs that will allow them to continue to progress and provide the services that we're providing. And especially, I think, you know, if the last year and a half has taught us nothing, it's that we actually can do things more remotely. We can do things, we can have electronic plans and models. We're able to make that work, but that takes technology, and that technology takes cost. And so what this will allow the city to do is to create dedicated funding to offset those costs. Again, we can put that aside, and then when we need to, you know, pay for that annual maintenance on the permitting system, if we need to get more laptops or iPads for the inspectors in the field, we have a dedicated funding source for those. And lastly, to develop cost recovery targets and goals for fee-related services at best, but at a minimum at a departmental level. So what do we want our cost recovery goal to be for building? Cost recovery goal for planning, so that we have an idea that we're consciously making the decision, what is the cost that we want to recover? We know what it costs us, how much of that do we want to recover? And so kind of with that in mind, the results of this study show that approximately $1.2 million of a deficit is what is happening right now. That's the deficit between what you're charging for your fee-based services and what it's actually costing you to provide those services.
Is that on a, is that on a per-year basis?
This would be annual, yes.
Yep.
This is, yeah. It's not monthly. So annually, on average, this is what that deficit is. And so it's about 73% cost recovery. When we look at building, building's at about 89% cost recovery, so kind of right in the middle of what we would typically see for building, somewhere between 80 and 100%. Planning at about 71%. You know, we usually see anywhere between, you know, 60, 70 to about 80, 90% with those services. And then engineering, actually, quite a bit lower than what we normally see at 40% because those services are usually much higher at about 80 to 90. And it's really important to note that while there's this deficit, obviously, the city is paying, they're paying the staff who are providing these services. So when we're not recovering the funds, when we're not charging fees appropriately to offset those costs, what we're really doing is we're using taxpayer money to subsidize those services, or some other funding source other than fee revenue. So right now, we're, we have this deficit of about $1.2 million in relation to development fee-related services. So to kind of give you an idea, you know, not everything is kind of doom and gloom, so to speak. You know, this is, there are over, I think, 300 fees that we looked at. So some need to go up, some need to go down, some are kind of pretty spot-on, and some of them have minimal changes or impacts. And again, what we're doing is when we look at this from an annual perspective, right? You know, if we look at this as an example, you know, the per-hour rate for building, you're charging 136, it's costing you 149. It's a $13 difference. But if we start to do 200 hours, 2,000 hours charged out at that, that makes a big impact. And so when we look at these, some of these deficits don't seem like a big deal, but again, when we look at it over the course of a year and all the services that we're providing, it adds up. So here, like I said, you know, plan review fee, the 65% makes sense. The inspection fee, the per hour, needs to increase a little bit. The residential water heater actually shows a slight overage, so would need to be reduced so that we're not overcollecting for that. Same thing with the new single-family plumbing, bringing that down a little bit, and then a demolition permit for a single family with an, you know, potentially an increase of $20. If we take a look at some sample fees from planning, you know, the environmental checklist, was there a comment? I think there's a hand.
Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, Courtney, just continue. I have, I do have some comments, but when you're done with the presentation, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Sure. So the environmental checklist, you know, we see a deficit of about $490, the pre-application conference, about $509, whereas with the temporary use permit, you know, again, that that's a, that's an overage of about 430. When we see something like the UZDP preliminary review, there's a significant deficit there. And it should be noted, too, that some of these are currently kind of deemed initial deposits, right? So that we're taking, we're saying it's X number of hours, and anything above that, we're going to charge for that. So when we then worked with staff to look at what that is, the actual average number of hours for that particular project were significantly higher than what we're initially taking. So that's why you would see something like this, this large deficit, so to speak. And then the per hour planning review is a deficit of about $98. Similarly, if we look at engineering fees, you know, we've got some that are significant deficits, things like the type C right-of-way utility permit and the UZDP for engineering's specific review. And then there are also ones that show some overages, like the affidavits of minor corrections. And then obviously, the per hour fee, it's about a difference of $51. And also, in the mix of all this, are some fees and some permits that have previously been kind of set low, where the direction has been to not charge for those services or to charge minimal fees for those services. So we kind of wanted to bring those to the forefront and call those out, because that is something that we do want to talk about in a little bit later, which is, do we want to continue to provide these subsidies, and if so, at what level? So if we look at things like docket requests, where we're not charging anything, but it is costing, it's costing the city about $1,700 to $2,500 to provide these services. And if we look at tree removals and unhealthy trees, we're either charging $69 or we're not charging anything, and yet we've got, you know, $652 for those or $1,270 for those. So there's kind of a wide range in the deficits associated with those permits. But again, these are certain items that have previously been looked at as providing a greater bit, that we don't want to have a barrier to pulling those permits and having those services. So previously, they've been set at minimal or no cost. So real kind of high-level overview of the results of the study. So we looked at approximately 300 fees across building, planning, and engineering related to development services. On average, the per-unit cost recovery was about 67%. So if we assume that you did one of everything, the average then came out to about 67% cost recovery on a per-unit basis. There's only 13 fees that showed an over-recovery, meaning that they would need to be reduced so that we're not overcharging for those services. All other fees show deficits that range between $5 and $9,800. We are recommending eliminating counter-service and permit issuance fees, rather than kind of tacking that on as another thing that we need to add in there, rolling that into the service, something that gets applied to all permits. So rather than kind of calling it out separately, which makes it harder then for applicants to understand what their fee is, we're recommending eliminating that and rolling it into the base fees. We're also proposing to add 26 new fees to recover for existing services that are being provided, but for which there isn't really a charge for those services. So we've got services that we're kind of shoehorning into other fees and really calling those out for the service that they are, and making sure that the cost, the fee associated with that is appropriate. And then, obviously, the detailed results of this study have been provided as an exhibit to this and are in the fee study report that we've also accompanied in the agenda packet. So if we talk a little bit about service delivery results, current fees are based on outdated standards and service levels. Like I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of fees where we assumed a certain amount of time for things, and then we're kind of tacking on after the fact. And so those service level assumptions that were included in the current fee schedule just don't really represent how services are being provided or by who the services are providing. What we have presented to you reflects updated standards of service with current staffing levels. So it incorporates additional reviews in base fees. We're trying to provide more transparency to indicate to the applicants the true cost of that service, rather than kind of showing an artificially low, artificially low kind of base and then tacking on additional costs, really showing them what it is that it's costing for the city to provide that service. As I mentioned earlier, kind of getting rid of these kind of add-on fees, such as permit processing and counter-services, because we're incorporating those into the base fee. Again, the permit processing fee gets applied to every single permit. So rather than having it be a separate line item, rolling that cost and factoring it in to the base fee. Again, what that does for the applicant is it allows them to better understand what their cost is, because if they don't understand that they need to add things together, they might assume that their cost would be less when they come to full permit or apply for an application. And then adding new fees, again, for existing services, providing, just providing more transparency to the applicants. These are the services that we're providing, and these are the service levels associated with those services. So we kind of talked about what the results are, right? We calculated what the cost is, we documented all of these services, and now what we need to do is think about cost recovery. And so first and foremost, we need to make sure that we're complying with state law, which does provide the city the ability to charge reasonable fees to cover jurisdictional costs associated with processing, inspecting, and reviewing applications. So again, making sure that we have reasonable fees that are reflective of our full cost of providing that service. So recoverable costs include staff time and costs associated with reviewing and inspecting. So those staff who are actually hands-on with those plans, out in the field, boots on the ground, doing those inspections, the supervisory time and support associated with managing staff. So people like David or Sarah, who are supporting those staff in their ability to provide the services that are on that fee schedule. And then also citywide overhead, like we talked about. These staff don't exist in a vacuum. It takes a village, as it were, to support these staff. We need people to manage their payroll, to make sure that their benefits are appropriate, to provide any other kind of managerial support in association with those staff.
Councilmembers, do you have questions now, or do you want to hold off until the end?
I can hold.
I would prefer to.
Till the end.
Okay.
Okay.
So things that would not be recoverable are things like time associated with processing public reference requests, code enforcement actions, we're going out and looking at that, or city-initiated public policy projects. Those are things that are outside of what is being requested from these development services actions. So those would be costs that would not be factored in and have not. So those would be costs that would not be factored in and have not been factored in when we say, this is what the cost of service is, this is what the annual cost to the city is to provide these services. And so with that, I'll kind of quickly sum up of, of what is really being asked of the council tonight. First is, should the city move to 100% cost recovery? And if not 100% cost recovery, realizing that that means that we're using general fund monies to offset any difference with that, what level of cost recovery should we have at a per-unit level, at a departmental level, or for development services as a whole? So as an example, you know, the council could say, we want to do 90% cost recovery across the board. Or you could say, we want building to be 100% cost recovery, planning to be, you know, 90% cost recovery, and so forth. To kind of take a look at that and, and at least provide an overarching goal. And that goal doesn't have to apply to every single fee, which kind of brings me to this next point, which is, should there, should there be applications for which we want to subsidize in whole or in part? And if so, what are those permits and let's identify those? And the reasoning behind this is, is, is it gives not only staff direction for what that is, but it allows then to maintain that fee schedule with that direction in mind going forward. And it also documents it in future years when looking back. A lot of times we will do these studies and you'll look at something and you'll say, gosh, this is a really big discrepancy between the fee that you're charging and the cost associated with that service. But if you go back and you look at a previous study, there really isn't a discrepancy in the cost. It's just that council had chosen to subsidize a particular fee. And so documenting that information, again, just provides future decision-makers with the understanding and the information that they need to provide context for the decisions that were made and the fees that they see in front of them and the costs associated with the services. And so with that, I'll, I'll stop and, and entertain any questions as fast as I can.
Okay. First question that we had was from Councilmember Trane.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, David Pyle, thank you very much for your hard work on this, and Courtney, as well, thank you. So first question to David Pyle. Are we doing these reviews on fees every three to five years?
We, we do update our fee schedule annually, but we have not done a deep dive like this in, in quite some time, at least as long as I've been with the city and I've been with the city for six years now. So going forward, we would like to revisit this on a more regular schedule. I think it's very revealing. As you all know, our business practices and the demands of the community and needs of the community change over time. For example, one of the big things we've seen is, and we've told you this before, is we have seen less of a reliance on professional builders in the community and that we've seen more individual property owners pursuing development of their property on their own. That's great for the, the individuals building on the property. However, it's very difficult and complex for staff because we spend in a, a much higher percentage of time with those applicants than we would have spent with a professional builder in the past. So that demand on staff has really drained our ability to work across, you know, all, all across all of the needs of the department. We are seeing more time being spent working with individuals and that has diminished our ability to be as responsive on a whole across all the different needs of the department.
So my recommendation then would be, or my direction would be on that point, on, on my point of this kind of work being done every three to five years. I think you should put that on the calendar and that in three years or four years or in five years, this kind of work should be done again. That's the first one. Second is, you asked the question, should the current level of customer service be maintained? That's the first question you asked us to give you feedback on. I'll just say yes. All right, let's maintain a high level of customer service. And I'm fully aware then that that comes at a cost. So that leads to, should the city develop permit fee schedule to update to implement the findings of this fee study? Of course we should. Why else? I mean, that's why we paid to have you guys do this. So please, you know, update, we, we need to do an update and let's do it. Change it. It needs to reflect the current services that we're offering and it needs to correspond with the operation expenses that are going on in this city. That's a no-brainer. Number three, should changes to cost recovery that result in fee increases be achieved immediately? I would say yes to this one as well. Like, do it now. It, I understand, it's kind of like ripping the Band-Aid off, just, it's gonna hurt. I get it. It's some people, it, it doesn't have all the, you know, it's not gonna feel good. But I would prefer to, to take the bandage off one, swell, you know, let's make it hurt and it's, this is what it's gonna be. And we might have to make an adjustment here too, every year, as we look at, revisit it every year, but go for it right away and, and don't worry about, I mean, it's not, don't worry about it, but we know it's gonna create pain for some people. Should all development permit fees subsidies be eliminated or should some permit types retain their subsidies? So if, Courtney, go to number nine, slide nine, page nine, please. Trying to keep this brief so we can stay on schedule. Actually, the reality is, is I want residents to do docket requests, so we, I'll subsidize those too, the first. And, and I know unhealthy trees happen, they become dangerous, and so we need to keep that one. Significant tree removal? Whatever the difference is, on the other three on this slide particularly, I would just dump it right into the current fee on removal of a significant tree, just increase the price. I mean, if you increase it to, I don't, $10,000, $5,000, whatever the price is, to be honest with you, I, I don't, whatever it is, change it. So you want to recover some of your money, just increase the current fee of significant tree removal. $69 is peanuts. So that's, that's a ridiculous number, in my opinion. So you could subsidize the other ones and get your money back if a developer wants to come in or a homeowner wants to remove a tree just because they want to get a better view of the lake. And it's a significant legacy tree, charge them big time and fine them if they don't want to comply or if they want to do it for whatever reason because they think they have the right to. All right. Okay, enough, get off my soapbox. The UZDP overages, I mean, we looked at this study, clearly, David Pyle, I think everyone on the council should recognize that that is STCA and they're bringing forward, unless I'm mistaken, that the cost for the staff time for that extra, whatever it was, 9,000 bucks or whatever it is, that UZDP number is being impacted by a developer who's trying to develop the town center. So recover your money. If they're gonna continue to bring back an application that is not meeting the code and they're not gonna follow the rules and they're not gonna bring it forward, charge them. So if you want to change that one to get full recovery on it 100%, I'm all for it. It's just the way life is and that's the way it should be. So. David Pyle, I think you got my direction pretty clear there, unless you have any questions for me.
Yeah, thank you. I do have one question and just, and also it's, it's just wanting to make sure that, that we're all looking at this as, so these, these are, we think, good indicators, these slides that are samples. However, we also just want to point your attention to the, the exhibit in the agenda bill that lists out all the fees and it shows the percentage of proposed increase. There are some in there, for example, that is, one, one that stands out, for me at least, is a text amendment to the comprehensive plan. And I, I think that one is pretty high. So I, I think the cost that we identified for that, not just the docket, but the actual amendment itself. So there's, there's two phases to comprehensive plan amendments, right? There's the docket request, which we, we go through screening, we work with the, the, the citizen who's proposing the change. It's quite a bit of time that goes into that and prepping it to get it to public hearing, et cetera. But then once the, the proposal is docketed, then there's the actual cost of running the amendment. So in that case, I think it's $45,000 is what we came up with in terms of staff time spent on that. So just, just wanting to raise council's awareness about the cost of, of not only docketing an item, but then once it's put on the docket list and put on the work plan, you know, we've found that these are, are very staff-intensive and are very costly. So if the, if the council's wanting to subsidize those, you know, it's a great thing to give, as you mentioned, Councilmember Trane, the community and citizens access to amending the comprehensive plan. Not every city operates the way Sammish does. So it's a great benefit to the community in giving them that opportunity. However, that does come at a significant cost to the city when we, when we review those docket proposals and actually move them onto the work plan. So we're just wanting the council to, to go into this eyes-open as to what these things cost. The list, if you look at the list, it, it's the exhibit, you'll see that there's a percentage of change and you can see what the, what the fee was proposed prior and is now proposed. And we, we would ask that the council take a look at that and tell us, you know, do you, do you want to make all those changes? And if not, are there categories where you can categorically tell us, you know, we, we want any type of permit or any type of action that has a public benefit to be subsidized? That, that would be one thing you could tell us categorically. One that came up, it's an easy one, is invasive plant removal. So if somebody is wanting to do, say, you know, a quarter acre of blackberry removal and then, you know, restore it with native plantings, do we really want them to pay 100% of the cost of the permit? Because that might be a disincentive for them to actually do that work in our community. So that, that's a good example, I thought. Thank you.
Yeah, and to follow, to, I, I did see that one too. My, a little, maybe assumption on my part then, so you can help me out here. I thought with the comprehensive plan update that's coming up, kind of my hope was that with the update would also maybe be less docketed items and changes to the comp plan once we update it. And, and is that a, is that a bad assumption on my part?
I think that's a, that's a great objective. You know, there will always be someone in the community who will disagree with what the comprehensive plan says and will want to file a, a docket request. We, we have benefited from the requests that have been submitted over the past few years and I've actually really appreciated all of those that have been submitted because it's raised awareness on our part of some of the deficiencies of our code and where some of the policies in our, in our comprehensive plan may not be in alignment with our code and we may be getting product on the ground that is not reflective of what our, our community wants to see. So not all cities offer that. Also remember that the, that the docket does allow for people to propose or individuals to propose changes to, to the development regulations themselves. So you could see a developer who's coming in and wanting to change development regulations or zoning or something like that. And the question is, you know, should, should in that case a proposed change to development regulations really be, be paid for by the community when it, when it would benefit a property owner? But then how do you determine that? It's pretty, it's pretty complicated for us. And like, like I said, not all cities offer this free docketing and then free review and, and legislative process that, that Sammish does. Most cities have some level of burden on the individual who is proposing the change.
Dave, do you have that information from like some other city, what, you know, is it 10%, 20%, whatever it might be?
I'd, I'd, I'd have to ask the staff. I don't know if Sarah has that information available. I know they looked it up. And not all cities are equal, you know, some cities align more like with Sammish, some align much more with any proposal requires that the person proposing it pay for the, the cost of, of the burden of processing it.
David, I do have that information and could share my screen really quickly if it would be helpful.
It would, thank you.
I've never shared my screen on Zoom, so bear with me.
So Miriam Leitner, Comprehensive Planning Manager with the city, just in, in order to introduce her for the meeting.
And why she's looking, oh, got it up. Look at you. Good job.
So we went through and just did a quick search on the different fee schedules and it's, it's really differs drastically from city to city, but hopefully this will give you just an overview of what others are doing.
I think the most, the most telling is that, you know, some cities charge a docket fee to get in the door, some don't. But then once you get in the door, most cities charge a fee for processing of a comprehensive plan text amendment. Now, a comprehensive plan map amendment, for some reason, that, you know, there are quite a few cities that don't charge for that. It's, it's really hit or miss and we don't understand why some charge for a text amendment, but then don't charge for a map amendment. You know, we, we can't get into the minds of the individuals that have put these, these fees, fee schedules together, but it's, it's, it's interesting to look at.
Well, having a little history in Bothell, I, I, I think I know where that one comes from and actually would kind of support that idea of having it just be the hourly rate and whatever many hours our staff are spending. But I'm a little, I have a bias because I knew the mayor of the city of Bothell. So anyway, all right, with that, I would just say, I don't think you should charge me a fee for me to rip out my blackberry and ivy and replace it with native plants. So I would, would appreciate if that was subsidized. That is also, that's personal though, but thank you. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I think the overarching question that David Pyle asked us was the items that have a public benefit, to Councilmember Trane's point, like blackberries. I think I would be largely supportive of some type of subsidy, but I think we have to define what those are because I take a very divergent tack on the trees because I think if we tack on massive fees to permitting for significant tree removal, what you'll have people do is evade it altogether and just simply remove the tree. So I know there, there were two separate fees shown there, one for hazard trees and one for significant trees. I think what I'd prefer to see is that the process for tree removal in the first place wasn't so onerous on our residents so that it was easier for them to do. It's, it is a very challenging task, but that's another topic. So as far as the significant tree, I think it was, it's $69 is what we charge. Is that right? I, I don't remember what it said, but I don't think we want to recapture the full cost on that one or we'll find people evading it altogether. And I don't think that's what we want as an alternative. On the docket specifically, there's a big difference between a text amendment and then one that is site-specific. And I'm very supportive of charging on the site-specific ones versus text amendments. I think I'm willing to do a partial subsidy on text amendments, but I don't want to subsidize it at 100% and I'll, I'll give my rationales to why. David said staff spends a lot of time processing those and there is another avenue that wouldn't have a specific resident having to submit a text amendment if it was something that had merit behind it because I think staff would then get behind it and potentially push that forward to council because oftentimes what we see are text amendments that are coming forth from the city itself rather than from an individual outside the city. So if there's others, I don't want, you know, staff is already working very hard and short on time to saddle them with, you know, these on top of everything else that they're doing on an annual basis. I think, I don't want to say it's a deterrent, but then the really good text amendments will be the ones that get pushed forward. And if they're honestly really good, the other avenue is you contact your city council and you say, hey, I have this text amendment potential. There is the ability for council members to then run that past staff and find out if it truly has merit and it could go that path instead of having a resident have to pay. of having a resident have to pay the fee. So I want to get to your questions here because I think this is really the feedback that you need from council, which you have up here. And should the city move to 100% cost recovery? Yes, with the caveat of the subsidies that have previously been discussed on public benefit. And then, of course, we talk about the subsidies, which those that have a tangible public benefit, which does not include someone who wants to take out a hazard tree or significant tree. I think we have to be mindful that we want our residents to go through that permitting process on a tree. So hopefully that answers the questions that staff needed feedback on. David, if there's something else that you want specific feedback on, please let us know.
The tree one is particularly challenging for us. I understand Councilmember Trine's angle on that. I also understand the angle that you stated Deputy Mayor, that if you charge too high of a fee, then they just avoid detection and do it in the cover of darkness, right? And then we're dealing with code compliance, which is not cost recoverable unless we're able to prove that there was a code violation, at which time there is cost recovery. But it does then take a lot of investigation work and no one leaves that scenario happy. So, you know, for us and, you know, having a background in natural resources management, you know, policy really is something that, in order for it to be attainable, it needs to be something that's accessible. So if you want individuals to limit the number of trees being removed, well, then we as staff have to be available. We have to have public information available and we have to have a permit process by which to track those tree removals. That actually is something that is accessible to the average person. Otherwise, you know, in the past, I've seen all sorts of things where people pour salt out around their trees or chemicals or where they pound copper nails into their trees so that they end up becoming hazardous because what they're seeing is for them to remove a healthy tree and do the right thing and take action is punitive. But for them to destroy the tree and kill the tree and make it a hazard, well, then that's rewarding. And it's behavioral. And we deal with it every day where people are very upset about the fact that they even are required to have a permit at $65. You know, they're offended by a $65 permit to remove a tree. So now this is one I think that we have to find the balance on. I don't have an answer. I wish I did. So, you know, my recommendation in thinking about it, and I've thought about this leading up to it, would be a 50% subsidy because tree management is a broader program objective of the city. And if it results in us being successful in getting people to come to the permit center or come in through the website and apply for a permit, which offers up to us a point of intervention where we could ask them about their objectives and talk to them about managing their trees, I think that that's a benefit to us. So that's what I would recommend to the council. And thank you for listening to my explanation on that. Appreciate that ability to offer that explanation.
Yeah, no, and I think that that's valid because it's, you know, it's rarely the council that is contending with residents that want to remove trees and come across a hurdle. I've had a handful of residents who have expressed frustration with just how do I get the permit and how onerous it can be? I've had to personally do it, so I know that it is, you know, I know where to go to find all these things. But I mean, if you have to measure every direction on your property line to how far the tree is and how many significant trees there are, it can be a burden, especially for somebody who has a bunch. So I think, you know, hopefully the answer is to make it easier, but that's a different discussion than talking about cost recovery. But I do appreciate, you know, your perspective on it, David, because again, you guys are the ones who are dealing with the residents coming in asking for these permits. And I don't want it to be a deterrent for getting the permit. We want them to get the permit to remove the tree because there is a replanting requirement. If they remove the tree and they don't get the permit, then there's no replanting of a tree in all likelihood. So I would certainly go with your recommendation on that one specifically.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. So David, you've talked about this a couple of times. So if I understand correctly, part of the challenge here is because we're dealing with more, you know, residents and individuals than we are with larger developments. And so those people tend to be kind of less educated and need more handholding. Is that partially accurate? I mean, part of it is we haven't done this in a while, but part of it is that some of those services cost a lot more. If I come in and want to build a house on a vacant lot or remodel my home, I'm not necessarily as savvy as a developer. Is that what I've heard you say in the past?
Yeah, yeah. The world has definitely changed from what it was six years ago. And in part, it's also that people aren't wanting to pay a general contractor to do, to manage their, all the subs. They're willing to actually go on Angie's List or something like that and find the sheet rock guy, find the plumber, and they're willing to manage it all. But that means that they're coordinating inspections. That means they're the ones that are submitting their plans, you know, and pushing them through the permit center. And they're asking all sorts of questions and they're wanting to understand what an energy calculation worksheet is. And they want help filling it out and they want all these things. And we want to be helpful, but we're not staffed really to do that. So you're seeing two things here. One is we're trying to find the right cost recovery for services that we do provide. And the other part of this is in a different conversation, which is the budget conversation, where we're coming to you and we're saying, hey, we need another combination inspector because we've got a ton of electrical inspections. We need another permit tech because the permit tech is the one that is coordinating all the stuff that's happening with the individual builder now instead of the professional builder. And we need another planner because site planning has gotten really complex with some of the regulations that we're seeing rolling out, which are great for output, which are great for getting better outcomes in the community. However, they are more challenging and onerous in designing a project upfront and requires much more input from staff in the design process. So that's really what we're after here is trying to balance out the level of service that we're providing with the appropriate fee level.
Makes sense. So one of my questions is, did we look at our, you know, you talk about sort of service levels or almost another, I hate to say, level of service. But did we compare our level of service with other jurisdictions? And the reason I ask that, and I am not trying to imply that you guys are not, you know, working hard or doing the right thing, but I also want to be aware that if these fees are really being imposed more on the individuals than they are on the developers, right, or large developers, then are there ways that we, you know, are we sure we're being efficient about it? Are we sure we're offering the right things? And as opposed to us sort of charging these fees, are there other things that other jurisdictions might be doing to keep their costs down? And have we looked at that before we just go raise our fees?
Sure. One thing that most jurisdictions do that we've done is public information. So, you know, one thing the council could do is you could choose to say that as a matter of planning, we're going to offer a 20% subsidy. And that is for the purpose of public information. And that's where we're spending taxpayer dollars to make sure that anybody who comes into the permit center, opens up our code, contacts the city, has accurate information and they get that information in a timely manner. Doesn't have to be related to a permit. It could be a neighbor who's calling about a project happening next door. It could be somebody who's thinking they want to develop their property. It could be all sorts of things, right? So most cities offer a subsidy by way of what they call public information. And that's something that is not necessarily a specific permit or something like that. It just offers the ability for us to subsidize our time with giving public information out. Now, that said, public information can also come in another form, which is public information handouts, making sure our codes are readable and usable, which if you recall, we're doing our Phase 2 development regs and we're going to a unified development code. And ultimately, our goal is to make that code more accessible to everybody who wants to read it. Right now, it's a bit challenging to read if you've spent some time with it. So, you know, we're working on that. We also have been doing what we call project guidance for several years now, where anybody who wants to develop in the city has to go through project guidance. It's free. It's an upfront thing we do. And the idea behind project guidance is that we can also then mine the data. We can, we could see what are the top 15 things that people are asking about? How are trends changing? What things should we be looking at to address in public information handouts? And we're going to be proposing with the 2324 budget that we bring onboard a consultant that can go through and comb all those records and can then help us pull together professionally done public information to overhaul all of our public information so that somebody can go into a catalog of handouts and see, you know, how do I deal with setbacks? What about tree removal? All those things that we already have public information on, but it really just needs to be overhauled and brought into alignment so there's a common template, you know, a common style of how it's all presented, et cetera. So that's another way that we could do public information. The big issue that we're having right now is that in the past, we were collecting fees for large development. And we, you know, sometimes we would collect more than we would spend. Other times, we would spend more than we would collect. However, more often than not, we collected more than we spent. So we had extra surplus monies to fund individuals to work on smaller projects. Well, now we aren't seeing those types of projects and we're really running out of large scale property to develop in the city anyway. So we don't really anticipate seeing a lot of those going forward in the R zones. So what we're doing now is we're looking at addressing the different form of development going forward, which really is, you know, the remodel. It's adding a bedroom. It's taking a vacant lot and developing it. It's doing a one to two lot short flat. All those things which end up being a lot more staff intensive than a large scale development project.
Excellent. So then my answer to your first question is, should the city move to 100% cost recovery? I think the answer is no. And it's not that I don't want us to recover costs in certain areas, but no, I don't think it should be 100%. I think that, you know, we exist in part to serve the public. And if most of this is about residents who are already here, then some of those things absolutely need to be subsidized because that's why we're here. So I don't think we should be charging people for docket requests unless we're going to charge council members the same rate. Like, I think that some of this is about public access to the government. And so I don't think we should do that. I think we need to talk a lot more about the trees because the way I heard you describe it, David, and even how I heard Deputy Mayor talk about it, is not what I saw on there. I saw a fee for, if you have a sick tree, that the cost to remove it might be less, right? But that doesn't mean that it's a tree that could be causing a problem. So for example, we have a lot of neighborhoods where, when the house was new, 15 or 20 years ago, somebody planted a little baby sapling and it was great. And now, 15 or 20 years later, that tree is attacking that house's driveway or their foundation and causing problems, right? And so those are things that we should not be charging people a whole boatload of money to have to come in and do. And I do think that the, how do we make tree removal easier and clearer is really important? And, and I will say that we also absolutely have to get some sort of a tree receiving site or a sending site, whatever you want to call it, a place where if I have to remove a tree off my property because my property, the tree planted on my property was not appropriately sized and now I have to remove it because it's causing problems, I don't necessarily have a place to replant another significant tree. And so let's create a way for people to safely remove those and make sure that they are not a danger and have a place where they can plant a new tree, a new significant tree that is easy and isn't super costly. Because we are, I mean, I know even when I was campaigning, there were a lot of people who complained about that, people in Tree Farm, for example, right? A beautiful neighborhood, but there are a lot of really big trees in there and there are people who have to remove them for safety reasons. And it's complicated. It's costly. They have to get arborists. There's a lot of other stuff they have to do. And I just, I'm not saying we want to make it easy for people to remove trees for, you know, what Councilmember Trine said, because they want a better view. But I don't necessarily think that the bulk of the people who are coming in to remove trees are because they want a better view of the lake. I don't think there are all that many people who have views of the lake. I think that most people who have to come in and deal with this are because they either have sick or dying trees or they have trees that are causing problems because they were not appropriately sized or there wasn't an appropriate number put on their property when it was built. And now they have it and they have to deal with it. So I think we do need to deal with all of that before we start charging people more. And we absolutely want people to come in and get permits for that stuff, if for no other reason to make sure that the people that are coming and providing those services for them have some level of standard, right? I think that the permitting process provides a whole lot of oversight for the community and for individuals to make sure that the people that are doing it are above board and they're getting a permit. And I think that just, you know, by nature of having that happen, it makes everything better, right? It raises the quality and we want you guys, the city staff, to be involved in some of those things. So I think some of that all has to go hand in hand. And I think maybe before we raise the tree removal, bless somebody, the tree removal fees too much, that we fix some of these other problems, right? To make sure that it's a well orchestrated and well coordinated effort. So I think we should also look at, you know, or have you already looked at, for some of the services, are there lower cost ways to provide the community what they need, like outsourcing? I don't think we should try to recoup policy work. Again, I think that that is the job of the city and that people already pay taxes and that doing the policy work should be included in that. I also was curious for some of the concurrency fees for like tenant improvements and ADUs. Again, I want to be careful about, you know, increasing the fees. We're trying to encourage people to build ADUs because it's, you know, affordable housing. They're smaller. They're potentially more environmentally friendly and they may not generate as many car trips as, you know, other types of things. So I want us to be careful about 100% recuperation on some of those types of things. So I don't think it's an across the board 100% yes. I think some of these fees, absolutely, it should be 100%. I think some of them, we should absolutely be subsidizing. And again, I am not in favor of docket or comprehensive plan text amendments costing people. I do agree with Deputy Mayor, maybe if they're site specific. So you've got a developer coming in, trying to get something changed, maybe. But I just, I feel like, again, that all of those things are sort of contrary to open government. And the idea is that we want people to be involved. We want them to be able to have a voice and we want them to be able to submit these ideas. When I think of all the amazing things we've gotten from Mary Wichter, if we were going to charge her thousands of dollars for all of those really great ideas, that would be bad. We don't want to discourage that. I just, I'm not in favor of that. And I think that we should really be careful about, you know, kind of becoming, you know, operating too much like a business. I think we should try to seek the efficiency of a business, but we are not a business. We are a public entity, right? We are a public service to the community. I think that's, yeah, I think that's all I've got. So yeah, I would, I would look at that. And in terms, oh, one more thing, in terms of level of service, yeah, I think we should provide really high levels of service to the community, but it doesn't always have to be exceptional. Like, can we have tiered things? It says, here's a basic thing that most people need and then if they need something more, have the ability to charge that extra. But again, trying to keep the fees low on the existing residents because anytime we charge these fees, it's just a tax. I mean, call it what you want, call it a fee, it's a tax. So let's try to be efficient about those if we can.
So thank you for that feedback and, you know, we'll definitely consider all those points. We have staff taking notes on this right now and we're going to definitely be revisiting this after we hear from the full council. One point I just want to make is that anytime that we do not meet the 100% cost recovery, that there is a burden on the general fund, on the taxpayer dollars. And another parallel conversation that the council is having right now is regarding staffing. So, you know, we're trying to find the right balance of funding services, but also having the right number of staff. And it really is important to us in order to keep the staff that we have, not face the constant turnover that we've seen in the past, is to have the right level of staffing. And one way to get there is to do more cost recovery.
And again, I didn't say no cost recovery. Again, I think your word balance is key. Certain things that we charge for, and there are a lot of fees on there and a lot of them, I think, should be 100% cost recovery. I think some things... I think some things, people are assuming that that's already included in the taxes that they're paying and making sure that people have access to the government, I think is a fundamental one. I think the trees one that we've talked about is definitely one. We do not want to create barriers for people doing the right things and we want to, and we want to manage that. So, and again, encouraging certain behaviors like building ADUs and allowing people to do certain improvements. I think there should be fees, but it doesn't necessarily mean it should be 100% cost recoverable. And I hear what you're saying, David, about the, the staffing, I think that's fair. I think if we raise a lot of these, that will, that will go a long way and, and will cover, you know, part of those staffing increases. And I think that, that that's a great thing to do. But I don't think that we should be running this as a, you know, every little thing that somebody needs to, needs, needs as part of the community, that we're going to just keep charging them because it is a tax, it is a form of taxation. And some of that, I like policy work, I think that that is just part of what government should do, it should not be something that we do in fee recovery. Oh, there was one other thing, the technology fee. I'm all for like technology fees, I do want us to be careful. I think that with COVID, we supplied most people with a lot of, you know, hardware and laptops and things like that. So I think, you know, on a going forward basis, it's fine. But again, I don't want to see this turn into some sort of a, you know, profit type thing where we're bringing in extra money just because we feel like we can. I want us to be super efficient about this and I want us to make sure. The other thing that would be helpful, like you provided with some of these docket fees, you showed us what other jurisdictions you're charging. There, I didn't see.
So, sorry Pam.
You talked for like ever, can I finish? No.
Point of order.
Jesus Christ.
Yeah.
I'm right here.
Hi Mayor, I just wanted to inform you that it is currently right now 8:43 and on our agenda, this item was, we were supposed to be at new business at 8:30. So we, what we have going on right now is just a rehashing of the same information. And I believe that staff at this point from, has the information they need. And if we could move this forward, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, we have a really full agenda tonight, so I'm going to ask everybody to try to be brief and not repeat themselves, but.
I'm not repeating myself, I was about to ask a different question and Councilmember Trean took forever.
Four minutes, so you can't tell me that you.
Okay, councilmembers, I'm going to ask that we not repeat ourselves and we just try to keep it brief and move forward.
Am I allowed to ask my last question?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I wanted to ask if we could get comparisons for other jurisdictions in terms of levels of service and fees that other people charge, because I think that would be really relevant.
They showed the, the slide just a second ago, Pam.
It was only for a subset of the fees, that was just for the docket applications, that wasn't for all the other fees. And Councilmember Trean, I will remind you that it is not your place to address me directly. You are out of order, sir.
Councilmembers, councilmembers, it's, it's getting late.
It's not late.
Well, we're getting grouchy, okay, stop.
But Councilmember Trean was allowed to say his piece and he interrupts me all the time.
Point of order.
Make your point.
Now she's attacking me again.
Okay. Pam, please finish up. And Councilmember Trean, I'm going to ask that you be silent, she needs to finish and then we need to move on because we've got a couple more that need to finish asking their questions so that we can take a break before we get to our next section.
I just thought it would be helpful to have some comparisons because I found that the slide that was provided for the docket fee and comprehensive text amendments was helpful, but we don't have similar information for other fees and other levels of service. And I think that would be super helpful. And that's all I wanted to ask for.
I agree that, that comparisons are helpful and we'll do our best to bring those back. However, it's really, really difficult for us to pull together level of service. That's something that is, is more qualitative and is harder to get out of a jurisdiction as opposed to a fee schedule.
Okay, it would just be great, like if there's a description of like, hey, Redmond charges X dollars for this and it's similar, we think it's, it's comparable. That's all. I think some of that comparison would be helpful.
I'm being told that it is in the report that is attached to the agenda bill, part of that at least.
I did not see that for much of the fee. So maybe offline you can point me to that and we can talk about what might be missing because I did not see, I only saw a technology fee comparison, I didn't see it for anything else.
Definitely offline. So thank you for the question. I, I believe it's important for us to see comparisons, so agreed.
Okay, I'm going to move to our next one, so Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. We're not voting on anything here tonight, are we David?
No, but we are, we, we are seeking direction generally regarding cost recovery and any, and any categorical areas that you might not want to pursue full cost recovery in, such as what Councilmember Stewart was highlighting.
Okay, thank you. Some very basic questions. Could you please define cost per unit? What is a unit?
I will defer to Courtney if you wanted to, to explain what you believe a unit to be in, in the term used in the study.
Sure, so a unit is, is a particular type. So if it is a conditional use permit, that would be the unit. If it is a building permit for a particular valuation range, that would be the, the unit of service. So it's, it's for a specific permit or application type, that's, we're just using unit to mean that specific action.
So it is not cost per hour?
No, uh, there is, certainly we have costed what is the cost per hour by position, and we've looked at average number of hours by position associated with each particular unit. But cost, but cost per unit is not the same as cost per hour.
Okay, thank you. How is overhead allocated?
Overhead is allocated proportionally. We, we do it based on, on, on number of hours. So we looked at managerial time, so what we don't do is weight it based on the, the salary of the particular person. So if you, if you are a senior inspector versus a general inspector, as the senior inspector, you don't get more overhead because you get paid more. We equalize it so that it's based on proportional for hours worked. And it, it is proportional based on fee related and non-fee related services. So while we recognize that, you know, David and Sarah and Miriam provide support to all development staff, but not all development staff are working on fee related services. So that overhead is proportional, so not all of that overhead is, is on fee related services. It's both on fee and non-fee related services.
Okay, I don't want to get into it tonight, but it would be useful to have a more detailed explanation on, on how this all works because frankly, the devil's in the details on how some of the stuff works. Thank you. Continuing, maybe this is a question for David, is, are fees indexed to inflation?
That's something we do annually, so we, we do update our fee schedules annually. That's something done by finance and it, and it does, as I understand, I'd have to ask finance for the details on that, but my, my rough understanding is, is that it is based on inflation.
So if we do that, do we need to really redo this thing every three years? Would five years be adequate?
Five years would be adequate unless we see a major change in business trends. And then we might want to pursue the study earlier, just based on indicators, you know, we, we, we do see things change, the world changes pretty quickly sometimes. And we, we want to make sure that our fee schedules are changing accordingly. And, and you know, it, it's often said that the wheels of government, you know, turn slowly and that government is behind the ball and is, and is reactive to things that are happening. We would like to be more nimble, we would like to have our wheels turn faster and us to be moving the ball as opposed to be behind the ball.
Okay, thank you. Is this an item in the House to go through the Plan Commission?
It is not.
Thank you for that. A couple of other things. On the area of efficiency, and you alluded to this already, I think a checklist or some sort of guide sheet for the John Q. Public who walks in the door would be really helpful in terms of, here's what you need to do, come back and see us when you've got all the information together, as opposed to having continuing meetings. The, as far as the tree issues goes, I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said about trees or blackberries or whatever, but I completely agree that we don't want to have a dissonance about there, for people to do, to come in and talk to us. And would also apply frankly to some things like minor remodels. It helps to have an electrical inspector come make sure that it was done correctly or a plumbing inspector. In fact, my plumbing inspector caught something that could potentially cost me a whole bunch of money. But we don't want to make it so onerous that if you do it on a minor remodel, that they will choose to try to run it under the cover of darkness here. So I, I think all these need to be taken into account. What we have here David, in my opinion, is a, something that needs further discussion on the detail though. And I know you're probably looking for something beyond that tonight. On your first question up here, should we move to 100% cost recovery? I don't think that's feasible nor desirable because part of what we're doing here is a service the public expects to some degree. Yes, they expect to pay something for it, but they may not react well to some of the numbers we're looking at. So should they be subsidized? Yes, to, for, to some extent. The, the other items in your list, I'm okay with, I, I gotta cut it off now because we've already spent way too much time on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you took four minutes, Councilmember Odell, so Councilmember Trean, I'm sure was going to interrupt you as well. He doesn't only just.
Point of order.
Yep.
Point of order.
Let's, let's not.
Okay, let's stop, stop, councilmembers, let's move on. Councilmember Ross.
Thank you Mayor. As far as the cost recovery, I think we should migrate towards closer to 100% cost recovery. On the subsidies, I agree with all the discussions on public benefit, policy work heavily subsidized, tree removals, I kind of like where David was going, maybe 50% in that range. Far as docket requests, I think that should be heavily subsidized, but there should be some entry fees so that we don't get any, too many of them that are going to spin the wheels of our staff unnecessarily. Fortunately, we have very smart producers of docket requests from the citizens to date since I've been here. So I'm, I, it's not because we've had a problem in the past, but I also look at the long-term future. We're not always going to have people like, like, like Marion others that bring them forward. Then as far as early intervention, I think that should be heavily, or not heavily, but subsidized to some degree, and that's like pre-app and so on. In other words, anything dealing with feasibility of doing some development for an individual, it would be helpful for them not to pay a huge upfront cost. If we can help subsidize that early, they may decide from those feasibilities and pre-app means that they want to delay their investment later, or they may find they can't do what they wanted to do and so on, and decide not to build and perhaps resell the property. I think that's reasonable to try to help them in the upfront process, then when they get into the construction and development and engineering, then we can start charging closer 100%. So that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thanks Madam Mayor. So just real quickly, we, we should get as close to 100% cost recovery as we can for any additional services that someone might need with very few exceptions. So let's be clear, this is not a tax. A tax is a compulsory contribution to revenue. None of this is compulsory, people are coming in asking for specific things that they need. They want to put a new bathroom in, well, great, get a permit for that and pay the fees, you'll get the benefit on the backend when your improvement goes up. It's kind of patently unfair to make other residents pay for the additional services someone else wants to take advantage of. I don't expect anyone to subsidize another residence need, whether it's a ADU permit or tree removal, or a bathroom remodel inspection. You're getting the benefit of the service, pay for the service that you're getting the benefit of. That's it for me, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so I get to go last. First question of, should the current level of service be maintained? Yes, at least. If not, always try to get better. That's where I'm at. And should the city's development permit fee schedule be updated to implement the findings? Yes, except I think that we need to, I worry about the, the tree fees. I think we need to look at that because if we make it too expensive, I think that could be a problem. However, that being said, I think since I had to use, I had to come in and get a permit for trees, I can tell you that we need a cheat sheet or something on the site that shows how to, to come in and apply for a permit. It would make it much easier if there was some sort of cheat sheet on the web, on the webpage that showed how to fill out and how to do that and where you could go and, and get the information to make it much easier. I think we could, we could help people out with that much and make it much easier for people. So number three, cost recovery, adoption of the fee schedule, yes. There are certain things that I think that we need to be careful with, the trees are number one. I think that as far as, you know, I've heard about the blackberries and that sort of thing. Yeah, but you know, we have to be careful if we're not going to collect for some things, then what is fair? So I, I do think we need to be very careful because what is fair for one, what is fair for the other. So I do think that we need to start recovering some of these fees. And if that's what we decide to do, then we need to be careful and do it across the board. If that means we pick a percentage and use that, you know, 75% seems to be the percentage of the night, let's go with that. How about that across the board? So pick a percentage, I don't care what you pick, but pick something. And use that for the, you know, use that for your percentage, but you, you've got to do something that's fair. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. So if, if I was to round up here, what, what I'm hearing is where there is some level of public benefit and where there's a public policy objective, that it makes sense to subsidize to some level, whether it be 75% or 50% or something in that range, the, the, the work that's done in support of what the, the individual citizen or, or the effort is. The other is when there is, would be subsidizing public information on the front end of an application in, in, in the manner where we are responding to project guidance requests or maybe doing a pre-app. And maybe the, the subsidy is really heavy upfront at project guidance and then it dissipates to the level of where they make actual application for permits. So maybe it's a, it's a even 100% subsidy for project guidance, because that is really the point of interaction with the community and we're wanting to make sure they have access to public information. And then when they come in for pre-app, maybe it's 50% or 75% subsidized. And then when they come in for development permit application, which is the final step, that, that it's 100% cost recovery. That's kind of what I'm hearing here and I hope, I hope I'm catching, there's a lot of different views and I understand that and I really appreciate all the views, but trying to pull it together in, in listening tonight, that's kind of where, where I landed is if it has public benefit or it is in furtherance of a public policy objective, it is worthwhile subsidizing. And if it is providing, and/or if it is providing public information to somebody who is trying to understand our codes, trying to know what the process is, that it is worthwhile subsidizing. So we, we can.
That's what I heard.
We can work on, on this package and bring it back and highlight those lines in the fee schedule that we think are public policy related or are public information related. And we will have a subsidy listed as to how much we think it should be subsidized and why.
Okay. I think that would be great.
David, if I, if I could just interject real quick, I, I wanted to, to point out that we do have a comparison in the report of different fees in association with building, planning and engineering. There were common permits that we pulled out and it's shown a comparison of both your current fee, the full cost, as well as what other jurisdictions are. the full cost, as well as what other jurisdictions are charging. Again, we kind of pulled popular, common permits, um, but if there are additional fees um, or permits that the council would like to see comparisons of, if you can just uh, let us know offline and, and we're happy to kind of pull that information together.
Can you tell me what page that was on? Or you're saying you have it and it wasn't in the report? I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's in the report. There's a comparative survey chapter. I, I, I don't wanna mess with the screen just, just right now. Um, but I can, I can certainly um, point you to that, to that section in the chapter or have staff do that. Uh, it is the comparative survey chapter. Uh, it's, I think, third, the last chapter in the report.
Okay.
It starts, it starts, it starts on page thirty of the study. It's chapter ten.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, um, if there's no other questions, then council, I think we're gonna take a five-minute health and safety break. And then we'll come back for new business, um, starting off with the informational report on E eight and E nine.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you both. Great report. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Okay, um, let's see, do I hear, can I get a, um, can Train, are you back with us? Councilmember Odell. Councilmember Ross. Okay, I think we better wait a couple of minutes.
I'm back.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stewart, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay. All right, I think we've got majority, if not all of them, back. Okay, council, we are gonna move on with new business. The first thing up is the presentation, um, information report on E eight and E nine. Jeff, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, uh, council members and city manager. Um, our speakers, presenters and Q and A responders tonight will include myself, the Public Works Director, uh, Toby Conan, our senior stormwater manager, Erin Nelson, who is the principal at Alta Terra Consulting. Chief also provides project management support, technical stormwater expertise and oversight, as well as regulatory uh, compliance support. And uh, in addition, we will have Patty Dillon as a presenter. She's also a principal at Northwest Hydraulic Consultants. Uh, she'll be doing data gathering, uh, stormwater model calibration, technical assistance, as well as modeling of scenarios. Next slide. So by way of introduction...
Jeff, we're not seeing your slides. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just heard you say next slide and...
I thought the slides were... Uh, Toby is the...
No, we, I keep doubling into...
There we go. Sort of there. Your pictures are in front of it.
That's what I'm seeing too. There we go.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
It was there. I'm so sorry. All right, so can we be at slide number two, Toby? Okay, uh, by way of introduction, at the two thousand twenty-one city council retreat, several major work items uh, were added to the Public Works work plan. It was decided that the concept of improving environmental protection through regulatory changes would be based on the science that is unique and specific to Sammamish. We have discussed the environmental, uh, we have discussed the areas of environmental improvements as four legs of a stool. The four legs of the stool include moving drainage adjustments and other stormwater manners to the front of the permit process. We partnered with D C B and Public Works on that, and that is moving forward. We're very pleased to see that, um, where it is in the process. E eight, uh, this is the hydrologic study for high-risk areas in Sammamish. This predominantly includes the field data necessary to calibrate the city's stormwater model. E nine is the activity, this activity will evaluate potential flow control parameters and regulatory thresholds, such as looking back at the two thousand ten, the two thousand sixteen, the two thousand twenty-one, as well as forecasted climate change using the city's updated calibrated stormwater model. And then on the heels of that, we will be considering various rule changes to readapt the King County Stormwater Manual and the city addenda. Next slide please. Our project timeline shows us wrapping all of this work up by hopefully third quarter of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, we plan to have between now and then several touchpoints with the city council, uh, bringing back various findings, information, um, pulling the lever, so to speak, along the way, as well as, uh, we will be bringing back the code changes uh, related to the design manual, the, the stormwater design manual, as well as city addendums, all of which will be a series of meetings coming back to council. So with that, Tony will, uh, Toby will be touching upon tonight's, the purpose of tonight's meeting, and um, he'll also be uh, turning it over to our consultants. So Toby?
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, council and mayor, for being available tonight and making this important project a priority for the staff to pursue. Uh, as Jeff mentioned, we're here tonight to look at uh, two of the four legs of our stool. Uh, this is what's come to be known colloquially as E eight and E nine. Um, our call tonight really is to provide a, a, you know, solid progress report, uh, what we've accomplished to date and discuss, excuse me, you know, what we're looking forward, uh, moving, moving ahead with the next couple stages of this. Quickly, I wanna point out that the, the presentation we're offering tonight has a couple modifications from what was uh, incorporated in the packets earlier. We did receive a geotech report and information, so we wanted to include some of that latest data with this presentation. Um, so quick FYI there. First, I thought we'd benefit from a quick outline of really what we're talking about. So let's look at our study area. Uh, the map here shows a central part of Sammamish, uh, with a blue shaded area covering what we're characterizing as our study area. Uh, this is made up of the Inglewood Basin to the north and then the Thompson Basin to the south. Um, these are drained by George Davis Creek, um, and Ebright Creek respectively. Both flow downhill and then to Lake Sammamish, obviously. Um, what's the significance of this area? Uh, both of these creeks offer really very high-quality, undisturbed stream habitat within the city, uh, which are really quite rare for urban streams. Um, another really truly unique element is that both creeks offer suitable habitat for endangered, like Sammamish, Coconie, salmon. Um, the value of these streams and then the broader basin areas is evident in the significant investment that Sammamish and the council have made to improve not just the habitat, but um, also the stormwater characteristics of these streams. Uh, we've installed a culvert at Ebright this year. It's a good indicator of this commitment. And we're planning on another culvert at the George Davis Crossing beneath the dark parkway on coming years. Um, both these are obviously geared toward fish passage enhancement. Um, this area obviously is, it's a significant resource for Sammamish and it deserves our continued protection and attention. Um, with that, we're gonna dive into some of the details of the program and I'm gonna turn this over to Erin Nelson, Delta Terra.
Hey, thank you, Toby. So the main objective of this study is to better understand the hydrology of your high-risk areas. And like Toby mentioned, um, you want to protect your high-value streams for Coconie. You wanna protect your investments that you've made with the culvert replacements um, on Ebright Creek and then coming up on George Davis Creek. And so the first step that we've taken for the study is to gather the existing information and review it to see what do we have. We need to understand the hydrologies to eventually look at some different scenarios and alternatives to um, determine whether or not um, different flow control, control standards are needed or different LID standards uh, for these high-risk areas. So we've, we've looked at the existing data, basin plans and maps. There's been a lot done in these two basins, Inglewood and Thompson. Uh, we looked at biological and water quality monitoring data and reports. We've looked at existing geotechnical reports. And then, of course, there's some existing hydrologic models in place already. So we, we're trying to look at, you know, what can we use with these existing models and what needs to be done to modify them to move forward and um, conduct some scenario analysis. So we've done that already, and with that, we've identified a few gaps. And we've already um, filled some of those gaps, particularly the geology gap with looking at some of the existing geotechnical data. So we looked at the gap identification, where some of the gaps were geology and hydrology, which Patty will talk a little bit more of. The thing that we're missing mainly with the hydrology gap is flow information in the stream channels that will feed into the, the modeling. And then the last step in this part of the study is to um, do some more data collection and some monitoring. We're in progress for that. So, next slide, please. Okay, so one of the gaps that we identified was geology. And first, I wanna talk about the importance of geology. Um, the geology is a strong influencer to the hydrology of the area and particularly in Sammamish. This, we, we looked at the geologic mapping that has already been done. And like I said, we supplemented that with some new geotechnical reports that were completed in the last ten years. So the figure on the right is um, just a snapshot of the geology data. And the purple is indicates glacial till, which many of you are probably familiar with. It's a very dense material, fine-grained, and it doesn't infiltrate water very well at all. The orange material or the orange um, that's on the map indicates outwash and it indicates recessional outwash, which is very gravelly, it's very loose. Water infiltrates into it and soaks into the ground really easily, and it stores water very well too. So in our um, data review, we supplemented the existing mapping and made some modifications to the, to the map. Um, just this pink line here shows some, the very slight modifications made to the, the boundaries of these units. What we found was that we, we don't think that any more geotechnical exploration is going to be needed in order to substantially improve the mapping, which will inform the, the modeling. So um, that's one of the results of our data review and, and the data that we collected so far. And now I just wanna point a little bit to the, the cross-section that we got from um, the consultant that did the, the geologic review, created some really nice cross-sections for us. And this is just, again, a snapshot. Um, you can see here from B, B. And this is like, if you just took a slice through the, the ground and then you would look on it head-on at it, that's what this cross-section shows from um, west to east. And then at the top here, this is where City Hall is. And this is, this purple material again is glacial till, which doesn't infiltrate very well. So that has implications for both the water that just runs off the surface and also for what type of stormwater management you might be able to do in those locations. And then moving to the west, Big Rock Park, it's, is in this area where you have outwash material. The water presumably in that area infiltrates very well, but it might fill up at some point when the wa- the ground gets saturated and then pool on the surface, which is probably what happens over here in this wetland. So, next slide, please. This is a, another schematic that kind of says the same thing, but in a more illustrative way. Again, a similar cross-section where you have the plateau going down to the parkway. Um, and the upper plateau is mostly glacial till. And we've got some photos here that shows what the conditions are on the ground, where you have wetlands that form on top of the till layer, um, because the water does not soak into the ground. But it's, it slowly will infiltrate. And then you have, on the flanks of the plateau, you have this outwash material, which can accept a lot of water. And this photo here is George Davis Creek, which is situated right in that outwash. It's like a, it's almost like a big bathtub filled with gravel. And so the water, when it rains, it, the water will go right into the ground. And in the upper part of George Davis Creek, it's dry most of the year until that, that bathtub of gravel basically fills up and then the water comes to the surface. So um, I don't know if any of you have seen George Davis in the upper portion, but it's, it's often dry until later in the year when the ground gets saturated. And then lower in the basin, you'll see year-round stream flow, where you're connected to the, the aquifer. So I'm gonna pass it on to Patty now to talk more about the flow monitoring and the hydrology.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you to council for, for inviting us to present tonight. So the other data gap that we, that we identified in our, in our review and something that's actually been identified even going back to the basin plans, um, is a lack of stream flow data measurements that we can use to um, to look at how the, the creek has responded over time. And more importantly, for the case of this project, to calibrate models that allow us to look at a variety of different scenarios, as opposed to just what has happened historically. So we are, we are in the process and, and hopefully on Thursday, we'll be installing um, the first of three stream gauge, um, the first couple of, of three stream gauge um, locations to collect flow data. And we're looking at locations in Upper George Davis Creek. So this is, again, the area in the outwash that Erin was talking about that tends to be dry most of the year. And so the red triangle that you see in the, the central part of the Inglewood Basin is the approximate location of where we'll be installing a sensor that will measure flow depth and velocity that we can use to then compute uh, stream flow discharge through that area. Um, we're also going to be looking at, at water level and flow down um, in Lower George Davis Creek, just above East Lake Sammamish Parkway. And the importance particularly in this creek, as Erin was discussing, is to, to see the difference in the response and, and the timing, particularly of when we start to see flows in the upper basin. So having those two gauges to compare um, the flows and the timing of, of peaks and how the, how the flows come down off of the land surface is important. Um, we'll also be installing a gauge uh, in Big Rock Park that was on the, the cross-section that Erin showed um, on Upper Ebright Creek. And then the red triangle that you see down at the lower part of Ebright Creek is actually King County maintains a long-term stream flow gauge station there that will be able to, to take advantage of their longer record. So what our process will be here over the next, uh, the next week or two is we've done the site selection. We've gone out and done some observations at the site, determined what equipment we needed. We'll be setting up the equipment this week. And then periodically through the wet season, we'll be going out, uh, downloading data, processing that back in the office and also taking direct flow measurements so that we have um, multiple methods of, of verifying the flow data that we collect. Next slide, please. And all of this is, is really serving the, the effort that's uh, mostly part of the E nine project, which will be hydrologic modeling. So we're gonna be building off earlier studies um, that have already started to account for the, the unique storage in particularly George Davis Creek and the Inglewood Basin in that outwash layer. Um, the, the hydro, hydrologic models that are typically available to developers and those looking to um, design stormwater facilities are based on... are based on typical regional response for Western Washington and the Puget Sound Lowlands. And we know that that isn't the case, at least in parts of, of the city of Samamish. And so the importance here of calculating the measured, of collecting the measured flows and then comparing those to the model is we can adjust the model to make sure that what we're simulating, these different parts of the hydrologic cycle that are simplified and, and represented in the computer model are actually representing the processes and the timing of the flows in Samamish so that we feel confident that this isn't just a model that is, you know, good for Western Washington. This is a model for, for the city of Samamish. And then, once we have that tool in place, then we can start to look at different flow scenarios. Our baseline that we use for calibration is the existing land use, the land use that's out there, the significant stormwater treatment that's out there. And then we can start looking at application of additional development with different levels of control and different flow control standards. And so as Toby and Jeff introduced earlier, we'll look at the, the 2010 volume control standard. We'll look at the 2016 flow control standard adopted from the, the King County manual. And then the 2019 flow control standard. And then we also want to look at the impact that potential climate change and increases in particularly extreme storms might have on the effectiveness of stormwater facilities as well as how, how they change patterns of flows to the creek. And so ultimately, we can use the hydrologic model to compare the effects of different stormwater management on flows and by extension, on likely habitat conditions and erosion conditions in those streams. Next slide.
That brings us back to me. There's, you know, a couple of points I want to follow up. The, you know, real quick, in thinking of some of the, the slides, you know, the Lower George Davis, for example, you know, we had over three inches of rain recently. And that stream didn't look a whole lot different than it does today. That's how much, you know, that's, you know, how much storage there is in that gravel layer within the basin. It's anecdotal, but it, it is instructive to recognize that. And the other one I want to point out, too, is, you know, this model calibration. It is a, a little bit of, you know, it sounds mysterious, but I think one corollary that you're probably all familiar with is calibrating traffic models. It's a real similar exercise, you know, just different framework for accomplishing that. So a couple of points there to, you know, help us ground to the, you know, some of the information we've received. We're going to end here on the schedule. It kind of illustrates where we're heading as we move forward with this. And draw attention to that red star, which is really our next scheduled visit we're planning on and tentatively for February. We'd like to give another update at that point in time and focus on a couple of areas. I think at that point, we should have meaningful stream flow measurements where we're able to, you know, better summarize how those streams are responding and, you know, start discussing how the calibration process is going. You know, how's this model really behaving? And how accurate are we? Kind of giving an update in that respect. And then I think, too, it's, you know, it's a good idea in a project of this nature to just periodically check and, you know, evaluate, you know, how do, how are we sitting with our goals and objectives? You know, are we, are we on target? You know, are we straying off course? Are we, are we doing what we set out to do? And I think that's a, a conversation that council deserves to participate in as well. So that's, you know, the end of our, our formal presentation here. I do want to thank Patty and Erin for helping out with this. They've been, you know, doing Yellman's work with a lot of effort here. And then I want to thank the council as well for, you know, taking time and interest, you know, granting us the effort to do this. So thank you. With that, I'm going to turn it back to Jeff for any final remarks he may have. And now we'll go back to the mayor for questions.
Thanks to the team, excellent work at least today. And back to you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited to hear that George Davis took the three inches of rain really well. I'm excited to hear what those numbers will look like in February. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you for this. It's so important and I, I want to really encourage staff. If they don't have it, we should forward it to you. The, the comments from Mary Victor. I had a whole bunch of data and statistics, but as usual, Mary provided information in a much more succinct and meaningful way. I think her, her closing statement that got cut off in her verbal comment tonight was really, I think, the most profound, which is, you know, we really need to look at the retrofit work. And I know, you know, when Donica was here, she really emphasized it. You know, we have, what, 22,500 housing units in the city of Samamish? Probably about 22,000 of those were developed under old and likely inadequate stormwater standards. And so the retrofit work, I think, is going to be so important. So I hope as you guys are doing this, we're thinking about how we can make improvements to so many of those older houses that are already out there and, and the, the, the work that wasn't done when those were developed, whether that was, you know, 10 years ago or 25 years ago or 50 years ago. And, and it'd be, I think it'll be helpful for the council next year to, you know, make sure as we look at what needs to be done going forward, how much of our effort should be spent on strengthening the current standards, which by all accounts are really strong or really focusing 1,000% of our effort on those, on the retrofit work to really bring up the, the over, you know, 95, 98% of the, the development that's out there that's probably subpar. So thanks for doing this. I think these measurements are going to be really informative.
Thank you. Yeah, Mary Victor did forward comments by email. So I've not opened that email, but it's on, on the morning's list.
Perfect, excellent. Thank you.
Okay, excellent report, guys. Thank you so much. And like I said, I'm, I'm excited to see what comes back because I have a feeling we're going to have a rainy winter. Okay, I don't see any other questions unless I'm missing something. I don't see any other questions from council. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have got the presentation on the Beaver Lake Park, the feasibility study, and this is Anjali.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, City Council, Mr. City Manager. Can everyone hear me all right?
Absolutely.
Okay. We have for you tonight the results of the feasibility study for Beaver Lake Park Athletic Fields. Council will recall that during the April 6, 2021 City Council regular meeting, staff were directed to pause the Inglewood Middle School project and complete a feasibility study for the athletic field improvements at Beaver Lake Park so that council can make an informed decision on what improvements you'd like to see at both these locations based on a better idea of the costs and potential usage of the proposed field improvements at Beaver Lake Park. With that brief introduction, I'll turn it over to Kevin Teague, our Deputy Director, to make the presentation and introduce other members on staff and the consultant who are present tonight.
Thank you, council. One moment here, I'm just getting things set up. Bear with me. All right. Hopefully you can see my screen now and can hear me. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Kevin Teague. I'm the Deputy Director for Parks Recreation and Facilities. And we are excited to present the results of the Athletic Field Feasibility Study at Beaver Lake Park. Most of our park planning team has been working on this feasibility study in one way or another, and they've done a very thorough job putting this all together. Along with myself and Anjali, we have Chris Jordan, our Recreation and Cultural Services Manager, as well as Shelby Peralt, our Park Project Manager. And with us as well is Bob Harding and Renee Finney. They are landscape architects with the firm DA Hogan and Associates. They're a consultant on this project and experts in athletic field development. I'm going to start off by going through the background for this project and then look at how our 2018 Pro Plan and our CIP relate to this project. And then talk about the master plan that was developed for Beaver Lake Park and then the athletic field study that was completed in 2020. And then we'll look at the field design options and preliminary project costs and talk about how that relates as well to Inglewood Middle School. And then lastly, we'll talk about next steps. We will be looking for, we're hoping for some direction from council tonight. We've got two questions before you. The first is, should we pursue option one, option two, or option three of Beaver Lake Park Athletic Fields? Or pause Beaver Lake and pursue improvements at Inglewood Middle School? So now looking at some of the background for this project. Our primary driving document is our Park Recreation Open Space Plan or Pro Plan. The development of our Pro Plan was a 12 month public planning effort, which included a statistically valid community survey, multiple stakeholder sessions and three public meetings, as well as a virtual town hall. More than 1,100 residents were involved in this project to help shape the Pro Plan. The results of the public input identified top priorities and what was missing. Public feedback within the Samamish community ranked athletic facility improvements in the middle of other priorities when asked about city park improvements. However, major stakeholders and leagues that utilize sports facilities on a regular basis commonly report that increasing the number and quality of athletic facilities are a high priority, with the majority citing synthetic turf as the preferred playing surface. The results of the public process was an adopted Pro Plan with key recommendations that include sports field enhancements. Along with that were some athletic field recommendations. Continue with multi-use concept for fields. Convert existing fields to synthetic turf with lights and continue to partner with the school district on field development. In our 2020 to 2026 Park CIP, we have allocated $2 million, just over $2 million for field improvements at Beaver Lake Park. This was to do just the bare minimum, as reflected in the athletic field study. This is just to replace the existing infills with synthetic turf. It does not account for any outfield work or sewer connections. Additionally, we put $5 million in a separate line item generically called Athletic Field Projects. You may recall that this was originally earmarked for Inglewood Middle School. Now I'd like to focus in on the Beaver Lake Park site and the feasibility study options there. Just to orient you, I'm sure you all know, but Beaver Lake Park is on the west side of Beaver Lake, bounded by 244th Avenue Southeast on the west and Southeast 24th on the north. It is in the southeast part of the city. The entire park is 83 acres. It was transferred to the city in 2003. The athletic field complex was built in 1997, almost 25 years ago. It has three baseball fields, 112 parking stalls and 24 parking stalls on 244th. The athletic field area is constrained on the east by the BPA easement and on the west by the Williams Pipeline. And on the north is Laughing Jacobs Creek and its wetland buffers. Additionally, the park is on septic with the drain field under field number three. And any of the work proposed in the, in these improvements would require connecting to the sewer. The fields are about 25 years old, as I mentioned, and they're nearing the end of their service life. The primary concerns are the surface quality and drainage of the infills, the outfield drainage and the outfield irrigation, and really the overall quality of the playing surface. A master plan for the entire park was adopted by City Council in 2010. This was an extensive public process that included detailed analysis of existing conditions and site studies and multiple opportunities for public input. The master plan defined three district improvements, improvement areas of the park, the west side, the woods and the lakeside. Part of this analysis was to identify sensitive areas. And on the north side of the athletic complex, you have Laughing Jacobs Creek. We see that the wetlands and the creek buffer extend into the existing baseball outfield of those, those two of those fields. In June of this year, we had the wetlands delineated again, and the result was similar to what we found in 2010 and during that master plan process with the buffers overlapping a portion of the outfield. At council's direction, Parks completed an athletic field study in 2020. The intent of this study was to prioritize future sports fields improvements that will increase overall playtime while emphasizing cost-saving measures. The study had four main components. Research national and local sports population trends, analyze field usage within the city, survey leagues and organizations and evaluate capacity of existing facilities. The athletic field study did an inventory of the fields in the city and found 13 fields were owned and managed by the city. 18 were owned and managed by the Lake Washington School District. 16 fields were managed by the Isaguas School District. And there are three private fields. The athletic field study provided the following recommendations. Renovate existing facilities for multi-use. Improve overall playing conditions and field quality. Build two additional baseball fields in the north half of the city. Build two multipurpose fields with lights. Upgrade five baseball fields to synthetic, excuse me, I said ball fields. I shouldn't have said baseball, to synthetic fields. And specifically to Beaver Lake Park, convert the baseball infills to synthetic turf or reconfigure the fields as shown in the adopted master plan. Now let's talk about the field design options and preliminary project costs. Option one at Beaver Lake Park retains the existing field configuration. It provides three full-size baseball fields with synthetic turf infills and renovates the outfields, installing a new irrigation system and a new field drainage system and provides new natural turf, a new natural turf outfield. This plan retains the existing pedestrian surface between the fields, retains the bleachers and the restroom and the picnic shelter, as well as the parking lot. I do want to point out on this slide, you'll notice at the bottom, if you can see my cursor, the bottom of the slide here, the entrance to the park is actually in the wetland buffer. And so in options two and three, we look at moving the, the entrance to the park. In option two, this is the, the option that matches the 2010 master plan. It provides three little league baseball fields with 200-foot outfields with synthetic turf infills and natural grass outfields. The existing fields have been reconfigured to accommodate one multi-use soccer and lacrosse field with lights. Add, it adds some parking, a new restroom, new picnic shelter, new play area, and moves the park entry out of the wetland buffer. Option three is a hybrid of the other two. It provides two little league fields with synthetic turf infills and natural turf outfields, again with a 200-foot outfield, one multipurpose synthetic field with lights. This field also can accommodate little league-sized baseball field as well as soccer and lacrosse. It retains the restroom, picnic shelter and play areas and reconfigures the entrance and adds some additional parking. So we'll talk now about the costs. Option one is, comes in about, at about $7.2 million. Option two, the master plan option is at $15.6. And option three is $11.8 million. And option three is $11.8 million. These costs include construction costs, taxes, contingencies, and soft costs. And they're based on, of course, the feasibility level of design. These estimates assume Sammamish Plateau will allow a divided sewer hookup, and I'll talk about that next. So an important note about sewer hookup and anticipated fees. Parks has met with the staff from the Sammamish Plateau Sewer and Water District and discussed potential charges for hooking up to sewer based on the size and frontage of the park. Staff has requested that the district consider dividing the park into sections, and that the city would only pay fees in the area of the park where we are making improvements. So for instance, we would pay $1.3 million for the sewer hookup in the athletic field complex area. And it's not our intent to have this issue dominate our discussion tonight, but rather, we wanted to bring it to council's attention. We wanted to bring this issue to your attention and point out that this, this will be an issue of negotiation between the city and the district that does have a significant financial impact on the project. Now, we want to look at the expenses and revenue and hours for each of the field layout options. Our current operating expenses at Beaver Lake Park are about $54,000 a year. And so with option one, there's a slight increase, and that's due to a higher amount of usage of the park. And in option two, it is about $82,000 a year. And option three, $73,000. We've also included the replacement cost to replace the turf in approximately 10 years. As we know, that synthetic turf has an approximate lifespan of about 10 years. Option one, the turf infields would be about $600,000. Option two, the largest amount of turf would be about $2 million. And option three, 1.8. Now, I'd like to hand it off to Chris Jordan to talk about revenues and usage. Chris?
Thanks, Kevin. Good evening, council. I'll be going over the anticipated yearly revenue and projected usage and hours. The current layout for field generates, on average, $40,000 a year. The standard rate is $17 an hour for youth and $30 an hour for adult. This revenue also includes field prep for games, which is $40 per field, which includes watering, dragging, and lining. With all three options below, the field changes synthetic infield turf and natural grass outfield. The city doesn't have a field like this. It don't have a specific rate established through council for this type of field. With some research, we came to an hourly rate of $27. This allowed us to project a more accurate revenue for the three options shown. We're projecting option one to be $65,000 a year, option two to be $110,000 a year, and option three to be $92,000 a year. Next slide, please. With the projected usage hours, we broke down the fields individually and projected hours based on current street usage, demand by the public, and field dimensions. All three options will reduce rainouts because of new synthetic infield for baseball slash softball fields. On average, Beaver Lake Park rains out about 16 times a year, with equates around 200 hours total for three fields. With this exercise, we guarantee that half of the rainouts will be reduced due to synthetic infield, but could be more depending on the weather. Fields can still be rained out due to high winds, downpours, and outfield natural grass being too wet to play. I took a more conservative approach to projecting hours. And option one could range up from 105 to 200 extra hours, depending on the year and specifically the weather that spring. This also applies to option two and option three as well. With option two, you can see the multipurpose field with lights would provide around 1,000 more hours of use by the leagues. But the baseball fields will reduce in usage due to the reduction in size and removing the ability to have adult softball on these fields. This too could range more in projected hours on the synthetic infield depending on the weather each year. Finally, with option three, you can see there's a slight increase in the hours or fields turn into a multipurpose synthetic field on existing baseball slash softball field. Also, with this option, baseball field usage reduces to the size and removing the ability to have adult softball on them. Their current usage at Beaver Lake Park field is close to maxed out by user groups from March through October. Available space on approved field would provide playing later at night due to the lights and a full usage with 12-month calendar. While the field would support soccer and lacrosse at full size, but only support little league play unlike the setup at Eastlake Community Fields that support up to high school baseball. And that is the reason for the less hours in this projection. Before moving to the next slide, there's an important note to make that these fields are open to the public whenever the park is open and can be used when not rented. We don't track community drop-ins and is not projected in this usage. This is different than school fields, where fields are not available when school is in session. Thank you, council, and I'll pass it back to Kevin.
Thank you, Chris. That was very helpful. Now, we want to compare the options at Beaver Lake Park with the options at Inglewood Middle School that were presented to council last spring. There were two design options at Inglewood Middle School. Option one was a single multi-use field with lights for a cost of about $4.3 million. Option two is two multipurpose fields with lights. One of those fields is for football, soccer, and lacrosse, and the other would be for baseball, softball, with an overlay for soccer and lacrosse. And that had a price tag of $10.7 million. This chart shows the comparison of all five options. And I know there's a lot of information on this slide, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to have a side-by-side look comparison as close as we could to that. So I'll point out a few of the highlights. Obviously, you know, the objective of this is to increase usage. And so looking at hours would be an important piece. And then the ownership of the different properties is also an important aspect. Obviously, Beaver, Beaver Lake Park is owned by the city, whereas Inglemore or Inglewood Middle School is Lake Washington School District's facility. Also, lights. The, having lights at Beaver Lake Park was part of the approved master plan. Adding lights at Inglewood Middle School would be a process, a public process to go through to get, to have that allowed. And then, of course, the overall cost. And the costs range from $4.3 million up to $15.6 million. So quite a spectrum there. With that information, let's talk about next steps. We completed the feasibility study this fall. And we're here tonight looking to council for direction. And then with council's direction, we will include whatever direction you give us in our work plan for 2022 to prepare the design and construction documents and look to begin construction in the summer of 2023. Also important to note that the duration of construction of the different, will be different for different options. Option two and three could go over to playing season. So that would be an important piece to understand as well. So back to the questions that we have for council. Which of the options do you prefer at Beaver Lake Park? Or would you prefer that we pause work at Beaver Lake and pursue improvements at Inglewood Middle School? I will tell you that our Parks Recreation Commission recommended Beaver Lake Park option number two. And they prioritized Beaver Lake Park improvements over Inglewood Middle School. So with that, I sincerely thank you for your attention and your engagement with this. And we would, we'll do our best to answer your questions.
Okay, I do have a few questions to start off with. The full-size field versus little league field? So if I heard you correctly, the full-size field goes up through high school? Or little league field goes up through high school, I'm sorry?
Chris, are you? Can you answer that one?
Yeah, so the little league would only go up to age 12, maybe 13. So, because of 200-foot fence, they need a high school.
I can't hear.
He says that little league goes up to about age 12?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, age 12, yeah. High school, they need at least 200-foot fence.
Okay, so if we eliminate those fields and turn them just into little league fields, how many of those fields do we have?
Baseball field little leagues, mostly all that fields are not between the high school. They go up to adult softball because their fence line's 275. So it's not like the Eastlake one. So high school baseball can't play on the fields, but right now, we have a total of seven. But if you reduce them down, you just lower your thing with little league, but also soccer uses the outfield. So right now, soccer can use it for U-10 because of the size of the outfield, but they would go down to probably U-8 for that.
Currently, we have seven?
Yeah, so you have Beaver, two at Beaver, one at Pine Lake, two at E, two at E S P, and then one at Clonie.
And then we would be eliminating, we would be eliminating some at Beaver Lake if we chose to turn them into just fields for little league?
Yeah, so with adult softball leagues, we could, we could offer them to possibly play at East and Mammish Park. But that's the next size, so.
Okay, I mean, we've got so many teenagers. I'm just wondering, I'm just thinking about the idea of eliminating fields for kids that age. So I have a concern with that. That's, that's just one issue. And then I had another question about community time. So since the fields and the parks are actually owned by the community, and I know that we're scheduling these fields just back-to-back. When do we have scheduled open time on these fields for the general public?
Chris, you handle that one as well?
Yeah, so most likely during, it's during the day. So usually evenings, afternoons are usually, especially baseball season are booked, and then weekends are pretty booked. There's some open times sometimes on Sundays. There's open times sometimes in the summer. But we are pretty booked in the spring and fall with leagues. And then if any time they can use is during the day for it. And we gotta think, there's no lights there. So especially in the spring and fall, I mean, sometimes it gets dark by the 5:36, so. So typically weekdays during the week is, that's not scheduled. But that's typically when kids are in school, too, so.
Okay, um, okay, I'm going to, I'm gonna reserve my other questions because maybe somebody can phrase them better than I can. So I'm gonna move on to Councilmember Gamblin. Oh, okay, before I do that, it is 10 o'clock, and so we're gonna have to extend.
Move to extend to midnight?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to extend till midnight and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, midnight's kind of late. Okay, so I guess we keep going. Councilmember Gamblin?
Hey, could we go and look back at the master spreadsheet? With all the, there you go. Would it be possible to get this in the form of a Excel spreadsheets? Because really what I'd love to do here is see a whole load of ratios.
Okay.
Okay, so that I can do some comparison as per revenue to maintenance, capital costs, hours used, et cetera, et cetera. Because right now, it's just really a big mass of numbers. It's very difficult to look at it and compare one to the next to the next benefit ratio-wise.
Okay.
So that would be great to be able to pull a little data out of this.
Yeah, we'd be happy to furnish that for you.
You got it. Thank you. That's it for me.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. I appreciate Councilmember Gamblin's question there with the Excel spreadsheet, because I did a little math on the side, but it would be nice to have it in Excel. You know, I guess technically I can throw it in Excel myself, too. But on first blush, at least, looking at the different options, well, I'll reserve where my head's going. But I do have a question on the fields at Beaver Lake and changing them so that they're youth fields. My impression, which may or may not be correct, is that there are far more teams when you're talking about those younger kids. So Chris, I think when you originally answered your question, you said like 12, 13 years old on those baseball, baseball fields. I'm assuming the teams for 13 and under are far more prolific than they are for the teams that are then high school-aged. Is that a fair assessment? So?
That's, that's correct. So anything, once you have, so you'll jump up, once you get past, you know, when you get into middle school, high school, you're jumping all the way up to a high school field. So those fields don't accommodate that. What you're really displacing is adult softball. So that's what you're displacing and then probably, yeah.
And how many adult so?
So we have a league that-
Are there?
So we have two that rent on Sunday. So, and they, they're pretty much from starting March to end of June, so.
Okay, and by having these fields more available to youth, are we anywhere where the Sammamish baseball, and I forget, forgive me for forgetting what their, their name is. Would they then be moving off of other fields that the adult softball league could then use? Like, I don't know, are they renting like Beaver Lake Middle School fields or PCMS fields that would accommodate those leagues or not? And I don't know, I'm not pretending to imagine that the Isguas School District would be renting to them. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the moving pieces of, if we displace the adult softball league, but we have the capacity to move more youth baseball and softball there, can the adults go somewhere else where the youth used to be?
They would probably need to go to another city field if they would want to do that. They like Beaver because you have three fields. You can do your league, you can start from 10, they go 10 to 2, 10 to 3. But if you go to E S P, there's only two fields. That means your days longer. It just depends. I mean, leagues usually like more fields, all at one location. They can usually get all their games done pretty, in a good amount of time. So that just depends on the league and who's running it. So I can't answer that, but we would probably have to displace them to another city field and not a school field.
Okay, makes sense. And I had one other question. What was it? Just a skip. I'm sure I'll remember as soon as, as we move on. Oh, I noticed, public input. Every, anytime we talk about lights, and I'm, I'm definitely favorable to lighting something up because I think that does extend the time that we get for them to be on the field. I mean, especially right now, I think everyone can appreciate in the throes of going to daylight savings time how little light there is anymore. So at one point, does the public get to kind of weigh in? Let's say the council settles on one of these options that includes lighting. When does the public get to voice their opinion on that? I mean, I always want to be able to hear from them and appreciate their concerns. So I'm curious, when, when do they plug in?
Yeah, the, at Beaver Lake, that was part of the master plan, and they had public comment. And that was a very negotiated issue with the surrounding neighbors as to where the lights could go. That's why on all of these fields, we're only proposing them on the multipurpose field and not on the, not on the baseball fields. So that, that, at Beaver, Beaver Lake, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be the need for additional public input. However, at Inglewood Middle School, there would need to be part of, part of our process would be to meet with neighbors and, and then have a public meeting regarding adding lights there.
Okay, so I do have one question, though, because when you say the Beaver Lake options that contain lights, we wouldn't need to go back to the public, but that master plan was done in, did you say 2010?
Yes.
Okay, well, the neighborhoods look a lot different now.
Yeah.
And so I think we would probably want to engage again, even though it's been done. I mean, I can think of at least one brand-new neighborhood that's right there in the quarter of 244th that would probably at least want to have their voices heard, and I would want to give them- That would probably at least want to have their voices heard and I would want to give them that opportunity to have them heard rather than simply relying on eleven or twelve-year-old information, so.
I kind of misspoke there, pardon me.
Okay.
Just, I, I wasn't thinking about the, the CEPA process that we would go through for Beaver Lake, for the project. The public would have opportunity during the CEPA for that to give input about the lights as well as everything else.
Okay, great. So I, I still like the idea of, of the Beaver Lake options and definitely looking at option two and three. Option two, while the most costly also affords the most projected usage of any of these options. And I like the fact that the public can get on the fields anytime, that they're not scheduled for you. And because of what Chris, you know, had stated, obviously, if we're talking about youth baseball being played out here or softball, we're talking about after school and on the weekends, which leaves the fields largely open for folks to do what they need to outside of that, and that's not an option at the schools. So I'm, I'm very cognizant of the price tags and then the available usage for hours, so. But again, that spreadsheet that I think on, in Excel that Councilmember Gamblin mentioned would also help kind of further vet these five options out, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of questions. When we do these upgrades, I know there's like maintenance that we have to do, but like how long will we probably end up living with these configurations? Is it like ten years, twenty years, thirty years?
The, the turf has a life of about ten years. However, the configuration, the layout, I mean, Beaver Lake has been in this configuration for twenty-five years. That's probably a good, good number.
Okay.
It, it would depend on how, how trends change and things like that, but that's probably a good number for the configuration.
Excellent. And then I was looking at the slide that talked about, from the athletic field study. And it said recommendations were to renovate existing facilities for multi-use. Build, improve overall playing conditions and field quality, which is kind of obvious. Build two additional baseball fields in the northern half of the city. Build two multipurpose synthetic fields with lights and upgrade five ball fields to synthetic. Oh, you don't have to move to that, I was just reading that. I wanted to go, I wanted to actually stay on that sort of summary slide. Because I wanted to know which one of the options tended to check off the most of those. Because I, I think, I think if I look at Beaver Lake, we're not adding any baseball fields, but we would be adding a multipurpose field and we would be changing some things to synthetic, right?
Yep.
And if we look at Inglewood, we would, in option two, we would not be at, well, we would be adding a baseball field because currently one of those fields is just a softball field, right?
Well, the, the configuration on option two for Inglewood, we wouldn't be adding another, the, the base, the footprint covers where the baseball field and the softball field are, just can, just changes the configuration.
Okay, so that, that sec, the two fields there, the two baseball type fields, one is still only a softball field?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we wouldn't, so none of these options add any baseball fields to the northern end of the city?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, all right, yeah, I thi, I, I guess my last question is, you said that the Parks Commission recommended Beaver Lake option two. Do we have a copy of that report? I, if we do, I apologize. I did, I don't recall seeing that and I certainly didn't read it. But I, I'd love to understand kind of what their rationale was and how they selected. Because they dive deep on this stuff and I'd really love their insight. Or, or is there something you can summarize in terms of how they kind of zeroed in on that?
We could certainly send you the minutes from the, from the meeting.
Okay.
But it, it was at their October meeting that they made that recommendation.
Okay, yeah, it would be, it would, I would love to hear their, you know, their rationale for that. So if you could share that, that would be great. Because when I look at it, right, I, I will say, I think Beaver Lake option one and Beaver Lake option three are non-starters for me just because of the limited edition of usage, right? You know, hundred and five, a hundred and twenty-five hours of usage, it just doesn't seem like a good sort of cost benefit analysis to me. So I really like the, you know, seven eighty, eight thirty-five and twelve eighty are, are big to me. And I know that people are concerned that the school fields can't be used during the day. But I'm not sure how many non-school-aged kids need more baseball and multipurpose fields, right? I could see non-school-aged kids playing on the playground and they do need places to run around. But I, I don't know that we have a shortage of fields for kids to go run around on, you know, for non-school-aged kids. So I'm not sure for me how much of a decider that is. I think I'm kind of looking at the things that are going to give us the most usage because we're probably going to live with this for, you know, twenty or twenty-five years. And I think we should be making good long-term investments if we're going to spend, you know, millions of dollars. We want to get the most bang for our buck and especially, again, if we're going to live with it for twenty years, what's going to give the community the most usage? So that's where I'm kind of leaning. So I think the minutes from parks would be helpful. And then, yeah, I, I think it'll be interesting to see sort of a, a cost per, per additional hour, right? Or per hour of usage, what, what does that really work out to be? Because I think that's where we'll, we'll probably get the biggest bang. And then I don't know if you guys have any other input, like, do these cost estimates for Beaver Lake include your cost estimates for sewer or the sewer? So it's, it's what you guys are estimating for cost, sewer cost, correct?
We have, uh, we, we've spoken extensively with staff at, at, at the sewer district and, and taken the numbers that they've given us and then calculated in all the factors that would be involved with that. So we feel pretty confident about those numbers.
Okay. Parking stalls, is that a big consideration as well? Because there's, there's definitely a big difference between a hundred and sixty and two hundred and fifty-four parking spaces.
Right. Chris, do you know, uh, concerns about Beaver Lake parking?
Yeah, Beaver's, it's busy. I mean, it's, it's a popular park, especially on the weekends. I know with the Inglewood one, that's, that's combined with, I think, you could correct me, Kevin, but that is combined with Rachel Carson, so.
Well, the, the two fifty-four is what's on site at Inglewood.
Oh, is it?
And then Rachel Carson, yeah, Rachel Carson would be in addition to that.
Oh, wow, so you could have even more sort of overflow parking at Rachel Carson should you need it. I don't know that you'd need it with only three fields, but, okay.
So I mean, yeah, no matter what, Beaver's busy, so, right now.
And do you guys need a decision, are we looking for a decision tonight or this is just sort of an update and you'll come back for a final decision later?
Well, we'll get you the, certainly any of the information that you've, you've asked for tonight. We would like direction and we need, we need to put something in our, well, we'd like to put something in our work plan for twenty-twenty-two. And so we're hoping for direction from you all about which, which direction to go. But we can come back with answers to the questions that you've raised.
Well, if you're looking for direction for me, I like the two option twos. And, and again, I'm looking at it from a maximum usage. When I look, when I think about it over twenty years, the difference in cost is not as huge. And, and I think we need to really be maximizing the, the hours of usage, so I like the two number twos. Thanks.
Kevin, if I can just add, and Chris, please correct me if I'm wrong. At the time of the athletic field study, the fields at Inglewood were then looked at as additional. So the Inglewood option two would add two ball fields and two soccer fields to the list. Is that correct?
Well, Eastlake, yeah, Eastlake Little League, it wouldn't, I wouldn't say would add because, uh, Eastlake Little League still uses it. But like, the football field is not used at all. Now you turf it, you're going to add more soccer. It's a multipurpose field now, so they're not multipurpose fields now, but they turn into multipurpose fields if you do option one or option two, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Odell?
Thank you. Just a general comment, I sat through a lot of the public process on the original version of this master plan. And I have to tell you that the, most of the public comment was received in two thousand nine, not two thousand ten. And number two, lights were probably the single biggest discussion item during this whole time. So be it a, uh, option two or option three thing at Beaver Lake Park with the lights coming on or be it Inglewood with less there, that will be a major issue in public process. Okay, uh, I thought I heard that the capital costs items did include the sewer costs, am I correct? Or BLP two and three?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I said, I thought I understood that the sewer costs were incorporated in the fifteen-point-six million number for Beaver Lake Park two. And the million for Beaver Lake Park three, correct?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, good. Besides, uh, Eastlake High School, are there any, any other current, like Washington School District fields that we're using and scheduling?
Chris, Chris, do you want to answer that?
You mean like user groups using Eastlake Community Fields, is that what you're asking?
Well, I mean, uh, being used by, through our scheduling process.
Like our scheduling, okay, so typically, we just do it for all Samamish residents, so. Typically those all over, they're going to be like Eastlake football, they're going to be Eastlake lacrosse, but maybe I'm not understanding your question, I'm sorry, Tom.
Okay, let me try it again. Eastlake High School, we schedule, correct?
Yes.
Skyline, we do not.
You're correct.
Correct.
So are there any other places besides Eastlake High School that we schedule in, in the Lake Washington District?
Oh, yeah, so we do, we just took on scheduling for Inglewood and all the elementaries in Samamish, so that would be the.
Okay.
Five elementaries plus Inglewood Middle School.
Okay. However, in the Issaquah School District, they don't want us replacing the turf, correct?
I would not know that, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Am I correct?
Yes, Councilmember Odell, they, we have modified the interlocal with them. I think you were on council when that happened and they took back, they, they, they paid for a majority of the costs and took back the scheduling.
Okay, thank you, actually, that was my recollection. So I'm having a little bit of difficulty with dealing with Inglewood one way and, pardon me, dealing with Lake Washington one way and Issaquah on a different, different pattern. Fundamentally, someone is picking up more of the cost than the other side is. So I consider that to be an issue. Looking over my notes here. I haven't heard Cloughane Park mentioned, and I wasn't on council when you guys went through that. Were there ball field options in that one?
There are renovations of the existing fields, but not additions, not additional fields.
Okay, thank you. The original Beaver Lake Park master plan had improvements to not only the, the ball fields, but also the woods and lakeside. That's not being currently contemplated here, is it?
No, this is specifically just the, the athletic complex.
Okay. I, I guess one thing is nagging my, my mind here a little bit is that Samamish is approaching buildout to some extent. So our population growth may level off or slow down at least. The other thing is, um, the demographics may be changing too. Where the percent increase in, uh, shall we say, school-aged kids may not grow as fast as been forecast. I don't know if I'm right or wrong on that one. I'd have to go to the Back to the Lake Washington forecast for their capital plan. But before we put a, a whole bunch of money in to doing anything here, I think we should take a look at that as a council, just to cor, correlate it. Those are all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Treen?
Go with the option, uh, my, my opinion would be that you would go with option two of Beaver Lake Park. The idea then would be to move forward with, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, then the idea would be to move forward with the Ingle, uh, Inglewood Middle School option two when the school district kind of steps in line. I, I, I'm a little leery of Inglewood Middle School option two only because the school district needs to upgrade their facilities anyway. And so, but I like the idea of Inglemore Middle School. Because the numbers, well, it, I need, I, I'm like, uh, Councilmember Gamblin. I'd like to look at that Excel spreadsheet and just see if the maintenance really is worth it. So without that information, uh, I would go Beaver Lake Plan Option Two. And then I'd like to in two years look at, uh, Inglemore, Inglewood Middle School Option Two. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can butt in here, I didn't say it, but I prefer Beaver Lake Park Option Two. And I'm also with, uh, Mr. Treen on waiting on Inglewood Option Two.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. Um, a couple of questions just as I'm looking. I, I don't recall the full conversation that we had on Inglewood Middle School, but my understanding was the school is obviously going to get some exclusive use of it and they are the owner of it. But they weren't, were they bringing any money to the table to pay for it? I don't remember.
They were, uh, they were paying for the track. The, it was divided, the track portion was divided out for their, uh, for them to pay for and they were sharing the cost of the restroom. But the lion's share of the, of the fields' costs, actually all of the field costs was on the city.
Okay, and, and that, and that was kind of my recollection was that it felt like a very lopsided burden. So given that we don't have the Excel spreadsheet, but staff needs direction, I'm going to follow what the Parks recommendation was, which was Beaver Lake Option Two.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to go with, this time I think it would still be really nice if we sat down with the school board. Because I think that we could perhaps talk to them and see if we could get them to do a little bit more because I think we need more fields and we need them to pitch in on that. I think we need them to put in more money than what they're looking at paying for on the Inglewood. I like option two, but I think we need to see if we can get them to put in something more on there. And I like option two, except I do have a few more questions on that. I, I'm still, pardon?
Which option two?
Option two for, option two for both, option two for Beaver Lake, option two for Inglewood. I want to wait on Inglewood, I think we need to sit down with the school board. I always think we should sit down with the school board whenever we're going to do something with them. But on this, as far as the, the fields go, can we add to that spreadsheet you're going to do? I would like to see the fields as we are taking away the full-size fields. I want to make sure that we add that into. I would like to see the fields as we are taking away the full size fields, I want to make sure that we add that into that spreadsheet. Because I'm concerned as we have more and more people aging in our population, we're going to have more and more of those people that are going into the age group that are going to want to use those fields. So I want to make sure that as we're taking fields away, that, I, I just want to see what it does to the field layout. The second thing is, is that last time we talked about baseball fields, when I got home, I was completely inundated with lots of emails, because girls softball and girls fast pitch can only play on particular fields, and they particularly named Beaver Lake. So I want to make sure that we're not doing anything to keep them from playing on fields. Because, you know, I know from having a daughter that played the, both softball and fast pitch, that she was limited on fields, other than that, we had to drive all the way up to North Bend. So I want to make sure that we keep fields, make sure that the girls have fields to play on as well. So please add that to the spreadsheet as well.
Okay.
And I think, I think that's it.
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just want to share, I did some Excel spreadsheeting while we were waiting. And just so people know, the Beaver Lake Option Two will cost $18,682 per additional hour, right? And I know that that's like just on the first year, I know that that's not over time. But compared to Inglewood Option Two will only cost $8,359 per hour. So it's a big difference in the cost per hour, and the Inglewood Option Two will cost $30,000 a year less, because it will bring in 20,000 more in revenue and cost 10,000 less in projected maintenance per year. So just doing some quick back of the envelope calculations on a, you know, what's the biggest bang for our buck, right? Not to mention the fact that it's $5 million less in cost outlay, right? So Beaver Lake Park Option Two is 15.6 million, and Inglewood Middle School Option Two is 10.7. So again, I, I like the two Option Twos, but when I really look at it from a, from a cost perspective and a, you know, what do we have the money for, what's going to cost us less per hour, what's going to cost us less over time? It feels like Inglewood Middle School Option Two financially just really works out to be a better deal for the money that we spend, and it's, it's only two thirds of the total cost. So I'm just throwing that out there, like I, I did some of the spreadsheet calculations really quickly, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, so just one additional thought is that it isn't always at the end of the day about the dollars. And for me, I'm looking at the number of fields that we're gaining, and when I look at Inglewood Middle School Option Two, there's one multipurpose field which contains a soccer field, baseball and softball. You can't have all three of those playing at the same time. I don't even know if you can use the two baseball fields at the same time, or one baseball, one softball game going on, maybe you can, but that's less ideal than everyone having an individual field to play on. So that does, you know, play into my decision, it isn't all about the money at the end of the day. I mean, it's a, it's a strong factor, no doubt, but when we're looking at the number of fields that we would be improving versus what we would be gaining on Inglewood Middle School, I think you can have a football game going on, and you can have a soccer game, or you can have a football and a baseball, whereas you can have a soccer and three baseball games going on at Beaver Lake if we did Option Two, just looking at the two.
Okay, and Councilmember Stewart?
I, I just wanted to let Deputy Mayor know that the current football field at Inglewood is effectively unusable. So the Inglewood Middle School option does actually add that, that football field that you see there, that football soccer multipurpose field inside the track is an addition, because the, if you've ever been there, that field is, it's unusable. And, and again, I, I think you're right, I think looking at the whole picture is good, but you would, you would, I think you are adding the same, you're, you're adding a multipurpose field either way, right? Whether it's Inglewood Middle School or Beaver Lake. Beaver Lake currently has three baseball fields, we'd be adding a multipurpose field. At Inglewood, you'd be adding a multipurpose field that you don't currently have, and then you'd be creating a little bit more flexibility with the two, with the baseball softball field, that it could either be baseball and softball, or it could be a multipurpose field. So I, I think you're getting the same, I think, like when I really look at it, it looks like you're, you're adding a multipurpose field either way. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, Councilmember Odell?
I hope this is the final shot. One thing about Inglewood that we need to remember is we don't own it, it's school property. And I would want to have some sort of ironclad agreement with the school board, that they wouldn't turn around in five years, 10 years from now, come to us and say, hey, you know, we need that field back because we need to expand Inglewood Middle School, it's our most constrained facility. And we need to find a way to expand it. And we, if you look at what happened to Pine Lakewood School, they used the football field there, to, or the athletic fields, to construct the new school, and then they replaced the field later on with the old school footprint, thank you.
Yep, that's why we sit down and talk to the school board. Okay, I think we are done with questions.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you so much for bringing this.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, I think we are on to our last bit of business, well, on to the, this part of the business. Okay, so the last, the discussion is on the cost study for small wireless facility, and this goes back to Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers and City Manager. Our presenters tonight will be Audrey Starsey, our Deputy Public Works Director, and Jed Ireland, our Senior Project Manager. At this point, I'll turn it over to Audrey, Audrey?
Good evening, Council, as Jeff said, Audrey Starsey, Starsey, I'm Deputy Public Works Director, and this evening, I'll try to keep this short, I know it's late. We'll just be quickly going over some progress with our small wireless facility program and asking Council for concurrence to pursue a cost study. So give me a minute, please, while I share my screen. Okay, can you see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
So I will, like I said, try to keep this really quick, just, I will go over the, the background of how we got to this, this place, quickly give you more of a preview than an overview of a few tools that we have to regulate small wireless facilities in the right of way. And then, as I said before, we'll be asking for concurrence to pursue a cost study. So a little bit of background, as you are all aware, our small wireless industry has quickly evolved. And with that, technology evolving has really produced and increased demand within the industry, such causing wireless service providers to rapidly expand their networks. In 2018, and since then, FCC has adopted FCC orders that aim to expedite the deployment of small cell networks nationwide. And in response, the city rewrote SNC 218.56, our Wireless Communication Facilities Code, that addresses both macro facilities and small cell wireless facilities that the council adopted earlier this year. Since that adoption of our new code, or updated code, we have been working on franchise agreement templates that we will be circling back in early 2022 to further discuss with council. This is a, something that we have been doing proactively for in anticipation that providers will be coming to us any day, asking for franchise agreements to operate in the right of way. Another thing that we have been working on, and again, we'll circle back in early 22 to discuss these in further details, but is it a master license agreement or an MLA? The difference between a franchise and an MLA is a franchise allows a provider to operate in the right of way. An MLA really dives into the details. It's another great opportunity for public process and engagement. And it really can get down into the details to, that we can make sure that we're approving designs that match the neighborhood looking field. Just summarizing a little bit of schedule, as I mentioned before, we plan to continue to work on our templates, and we will bring those drafts back in early 22 to go over some of those details and ask for more inputs. And the item on the table for tonight is asking for a cost study. Again, this is something that we proactively like to do. Currently, our federal law limits the fees for small wireless facilities on poles in the right of way to $270 a year, unless the jurisdiction has a detailed and defensible cost study. So these actually pertain to the costs that will be annually recurring, such as maintenance, inspection, public noticing, communication, and, and simple things like verifying insurance. So as you can imagine, those costs will likely end up being more than $270 a year for public works to provide those services. Building on what DCD presented early in, earlier in the evening, we would like to aim to be, have more cost recovery with those. The cost study, and we are estimating that to be in the range of 50,000 to 75,000. Likely will take six months to complete. This is a very detailed and complex cost study we will be working on. Typically, are the results for that, the results can range, but typically they're in the $700 per year range. And the impact of that, we would likely see the return on investment would be, we permit 50 of those small wireless facilities. So if we can charge those that $750 a year, for example, for 50 facilities, we can have our return on the investment for the cost study within two years. So finally, we have a few options for your consideration this evening. The first option is to proceed with the cost study in 2022. This was not a planned work item in the Public Works Department and is therefore unbudgeted. Again, that cost study will likely range between $50,000 and $75,000 to take six months to complete. Another option would be to proceed with the cost study in 2023, same cost, same timeline, but we can build that into our budget. And Option Three is to not proceed with the cost study, and the city would subsidize small wireless facilities in the right of way. With that, I have Jed Ireland here to answer any questions, and I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, we've got some questions, Councilmember Ross?
You mentioned that after two years, we return our consulting, return on investment. Then thereafter, we're going to be clipping up 50,000 a year potentially increased revenue. Does the regulators require a updated cost study periodically? So do we have to repeat the initial investment 50 to 75 to redo a cost study? Or how long does the cost study remain valid?
That's a great question, I, I might have to circle back on that, typically, cost studies are recommended to be done every five years, so I'm guessing that would be kind of the, the general rule of thumb. Something to keep in mind, as these were just preliminary numbers, small wireless facilities have a range of 350 feet. So as these become more and more popular, and, you know, as the number increases, it's, it's more, I guess, cost that would be coming into the city, the more facilities that we have.
Back to you, Mayor.
Okay. Is somebody calling me, or is somebody calling Deputy Mayor? I didn't hear. Okay, Councilmember Odell?
Thank you. Audrey, how many locations are involved here?
Well, as many that possibly come in, the small cell facilities have, I think, a range of 350 feet, or that's in our code. They do have a much smaller range, so if we're even looking at the corridor of 228, you can imagine how many facilities would be potentially arriving and quickly.
So the, what I'm trying to get at is the amount of revenue per year, we could think of getting net on this whole thing. What are, what are we getting now? I mean, how much revenue are we getting now if we're collecting the 270? You can divide that number into the total revenue and come up with a pretty good estimate.
Right now, our wireless facility lease program, I think we are, have around 330,000 in revenue, but that is for macro facilities, not for small wireless facilities. So right now, unless we have a detailed and defensible cost study, we're actually limited to 270 a year, and I don't, do not believe any of our, we have permitted any small wireless facilities yet. Those codes were just adopted in April of this year.
Well, I did some quick math on the, the delta, I took it at $500 into the 75,000, I get a number of 150. So that's 150 locations in one year, basically is cost recovery for the study. I think it's a good deal. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm a little bit confused, so you're talking about we'd have to charge $750 per facility to recoup the cost of a study to determine the costs. And so I'm trying to understand, like, so we could charge 270 a year and not pay the 50 to 75,000, but we don't know how much it's really costing us, is what, I think, is what we're getting at. But to Councilmember Odell's point, at 270 bucks a pop, like if we had a couple hundred of those, which it sounds like, Audrey, when you said you can imagine, I think what you were implying, that there would be a couple hundred facilities just along 228? Right, we're talking hundreds, not thousands, correct?
Probably.
Okay, so the, the question is, do, do you have any sense, without doing a detailed cost study, do we have any sense of what kind of order of magnitude costs it would cost us? Because I don't want to, I don't want to charge companies a fee to recover the fee for a cost study. Like, I want to charge them a fee to recover costs that we already have. And if the only reason we have to charge more is to pay for the cost study, that doesn't make sense to me, but maybe I'm missing something.
I can clarify that, so we would actually be seeking cost, we would be seeking cost recovery for our annual recurring fees. So our inspection time, time that we are working with a provider for maintenance and public noticing, are just, you know, ongoing communication with the providers and things like that. I was, I think my intent with the impact was just saying that if we did pursue a cost study, you know, we could see that return on, in our investment initially, within, you know, a certain amount of facilities, kind of estimating our, our results.
And do we have any idea of an order of magnitude of what we think those costs are that you just kind of laid out? I know you don't have the detailed cost study, which is what you want to get approval for, but do we have any sense?
No, there are, have, sorry, wait, and there, there are some jurisdictions that have, have done some studies that have similar populations but are not necessarily in this area. So that's something that we're still researching, that the jurisdictions that have pursued this have really come, resulted in about a $700 a month, or a year fee for, for facility.
Okay, so you, the, the reason we want to do this cost study is because we think that the 270 number is just wholly inadequate. And so we need to do the detailed study so that we can justify charging more. So we do have a sense that we think it's much higher than what it is today, than that 270. Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks. I know in this scenario here, and I know you were just using the recovery amount, it's not a mechanism to pay for the study, it's to demonstrate we'll recover those fees in a certain amount of time, given 50 facilities in this example. And that's if it's, you know, it's a range on, on the, on the study cost itself. But my understanding, when we talked about these small cell wireless, was that these could pop up could pop up just about anywhere, including in our neighborhoods. And that's still in the public right of way. So, you know, while we're using 50 of these here, I think the reality is, is there's likely to be far more. And then similar to what Councilmember Ross asked about, how good is that study for? Let's say we didn't repeat the study in five years and we were still using whatever the result is, which may, may or may not be $700, but let's use $700. Can we still continue to charge the $700 even if the federal government hasn't moved that needle on 270? I mean, maybe it's 320 in five years. Can we continue to charge the $700 and not repeat the study?
That's my understanding and I can confirm and get back to you on that. But my understanding is that as long as the, the cost study is done, you know, it's defensible and detailed cost study, that, that's something that even if the FCC adjusts their amounts, that we can continue with our amounts. And the other thing that we will be talking about more in early 2022 was, is building in a caveat into our MLA that the cost, the recurring lease cost would be subject to this, our cost study.
Okay. So that's a good rationale for, for going forward with this study, I think. Because if we don't have to repeat it in five years, then we continue to charge more for their installation in our, in our public right of way. And I think that that's probably a good thing. So I, I'm favorable for moving forward on the cost study. And I also think the sooner we start it, the sooner we can start recovering higher fees because they're going to start coming in and they're going to start putting these facilities in our city. So the sooner we do this, the sooner we'll start getting the revenue that we need to cover the costs, so.
Do you guys need a motion for this or?
Just said discussion on the.
I think just a discussion. And if we can have general guidance, it sounds like what we've gathered so far, that the council may be in favor of a cost study if we could just receive additional guidance in 2022 or 2023.
2022. Sooner than, sooner than later.
Okay, Councilmember Trine? You haven't spoken?
Yeah, I agree with Deputy Mayor. Thank you. Sooner than later.
Councilmember Odell?
I'm mute.
I move that we proceed with Option One.
I think Councilmember Odell, they said they just needed direction, so we didn't have to make a formal motion, so.
Correct. I think they wanted direction in just a year, and I think it was 2022 is kind of where everybody was headed.
Yeah, but there's, there's a budget issue.
Oh, okay. I'll second your motion. Because if it goes over 50,000, it's going to need council approval, right?
Yep.
All right, second.
Okay, we have a motion for Option One, which is to proceed with the cost study in 2022. And we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays? Excellent.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, and the last thing I have on here is for council reports. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just have one small action item, but I just wanted to draw to your attention if you didn't read the council reports. SCA has its annual meeting every year. We need to have one voting member from the city of Sammish, even though all of us can attend the meeting, we need one designated voting member. We do need to get that to SCA, so.
Who's all planning on being there?
I've already registered.
Okay, so can we just leave it up to those that are going to figure out between all of you?
If we could just deal with it here, that makes it a lot easier.
Um, let's see.
I'm going to nominate that Chrissy be the voting member.
Oh, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so Pam had her hand up, but not her hand up. So a hand up?
Well, I did, yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Stewart?
The real hand.
Yeah.
It's fine. I was, I was going to ask if I could do it because it'll be my last meeting, but that's fine.
Oh.
And I'm, I'd be fine with that. I don't need to be the voice.
That'd be awesome, Pam. You should do. You should do that, Pam. I refrain and ask that Pam Stewart.
I'll refocus my second.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
We have a motion for Councilmember Stewart and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? There you go, Pam.
And I will register tomorrow, so.
Okay. All right, then the next thing.
I move to adjourn.
No.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
We do have an executive session coming up next, as much as I would like to do that.
Don't hear a second.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you a second. We won't have the votes, though. Any discussion? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Yeah. Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Yeah. Good try, though. Okay, so now we have to go into executive session to evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employee pursuant to RCW 42.301101F. And it is until midnight. The bewitching hour. Okay, thank you.
Go or no?
Yeah, he's, well, he's him back. Just hang on.
Okay.
This is the City Council Special Meeting of Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. And we will be, oops, and we are here to take a vote to extend.
Extend to 1:00 AM.
Second.
Oh, till 1:00. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to extend till 1:00 and a second. Till 1:00? Okay. Any discussion? Can I make a friendly amendment till 12:30?
The meeting can adjourn earlier than, than 1:00. This isn't about how long we're in executive session. This is just to extend the meeting so we don't have to come back out here and I'll take a vote.
Exactly.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? Okay. All right, we are extended till 1:00 PM.
1:00 AM. Please, wait, we have to say how long we're going to be in executive session for? Yes?
I did. We are extended to 1:00 PM. Or 1:00 AM.
Oh, the executive.
1:00 AM.
The executive session? Okay. Oh, all right. Karen, let us know when you guys are ready.
Okay, council, this, council public, this is City Council Special Meeting of Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. Actually, it's the 10th.
Move to extend at 1:45 AM.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I'm, I'm not, not going to make it that long, just so you know. But, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to recuse myself.
You can recuse yourself.
Because I won't make it, I'm not going to make it till 1:45.
Unless you have a conflict of interest, you can vote nay.
Okay, so. Whatever you would like to call it, I won't make it to 1:45. So, um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so I guess the ayes have it. They will be going back for executive session.
Are you not coming back at all, Karen?
No, I've got a meeting at 6:00.
Okay, I just didn't know if you were coming back at all. You said you wouldn't make it till 1:45. I didn't know if you were coming back at all.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so Mayor, you're leaving the meeting now?
Yes.
Is that what, okay.
All right, let's head back there.
Hi, we're almost ready. Dylan just went to the back.
Thanks, Lita.
Thanks, Lita.
Hey, Lita.
Oh, hi.
You're back.
You're back.
I'm back.
Hey, Karen. This works much better from your home.
Yep.
Well, it does until it doesn't.
I think we should be good now.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Aye.
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 Good night, all.
Good night, sleep.
Good night.